Okay. Public comments and announcements. At this time, we'll listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a minimum or maximum of four minutes. For each speaker shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that's not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly in the microphone before making your comments. Aaron Burton.
Thank you, Aaron Burton, 2217 Scenic Shore Drive. I just wanted to come out and strongly say that I support the ability to have these meetings livestreamed and recorded because it makes government a lot more accessible to the people. I know for myself, I've coached at Bayside. A lot of times, weeknights, you have practices or games. My son does scouts. You may remember me from last fall where I brought my Cub Scout den to learn about the process of government. And now, we're in full scouts, so not Cub Scouts anymore, but those meetings are also on Tuesday. So, being able to watch the meetings and hear what's being decided, hear what's being discussed, really makes my life better. A number of people have even better reasons to not be able to come, like work or, you know, other family responsibilities, maybe physical disabilities that don't allow them to actually physically attend. So, I'm really in favor of this. There's also another segment of our community that can't access this either. So, if you have a hearing impairment or you were born without the ability to hear, you know, unless there's an ASL interpreter in here, you can't access what's being said. But if you watch the recordings, they have features where you can do closed captioning. And so, you can just automatically get that, and that allows you to participate in your democracy as well. So, I applaud you all for making this happen. I look forward to the presentation on this tonight to see what level of engagement is. And if there's a way to take this one step further, which would be to enable meaningful participation by people who can't physically attend, then that would be a great thing. So, I work for NASA. We run review panels with people all over the country and all over the world, all the time. And so, if we can make it so our citizens that can't physically attend can also participate, I think that would be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Israel. Again?
I know. Chris Israel, 1426 Cottage Grove Court. Okay, so, on to the next, right? So, Mrs. Cook, you allowed a two-year oversight that obtained Section 8 Affordable Housing statuses. You also created an unexpected $240,000 in city revenue variances over a two-year period. As well, you utilized $100,000 in taxpayer funds to try to drown the barge as a well-known, loved establishment that's been there for over 42 years, utilizing with legal fees to recreate new ordinances just to try to force the shutdown. At this time, I believe, I'm gonna leave that part out, sorry. To the council, per city ordinances, we are required to interview three companies before hiring preferred company. I would also like to know why only one law firm was selected after only one interview? Is this possible nepotism based on somebody with the hiring? Counsel, I'd also like to call for the review of Mrs. Cook's involvement, being city manager, as well as EDC committee, per Article 16, Section 40 of the Texas Constitution. No person shall hold or exercise at the same time more than one office of emolument. Do you need the definition of emolument? No? Okay. Also, why did the city pay $85,000 for conceptual drawings on a police/court complex that was already voted down by the taxpayers in November bond election? City Council said, quote, "Voters do not understand." In the meantime, Seabrook is under financial strain with the urging of Mrs. Cook. The city council has voted five to two to spend another $39,850 for the new police station, architectural plans that will once again be presented to voters on the next bond election. Thank you.
Thank you. Katrina McGuire. Is she out in the back? JP Byers?
Before my time starts, if it's okay, if it pleases the council anyway, I'd like to actually kind of mirror what this gentleman, the first gentleman, said. I really enjoy the fact that we can watch these videos on YouTube, and he's not wrong, giving access to people who also don't have the ability, regardless whether it's here or online, closed captioning, something like that. I think that would be amazing. All right, sorry about that. Here on a couple of things. First thing, I think, is we're here to support barge again. I missed the last meeting, and I shouldn't say I missed it. I wound up getting here too late, wasn't able to speak. Well, after getting here, or, sorry, the public portion was done by the time I arrived. And so, I wound up sitting in the galley in the back and watching. I then again went and watched the city council meeting afterwards a couple different times. And as requested by Mayor Tom, I'm not going to point any specific fingers. But as I stated in the last meeting, I want to make sure that everybody on this council knows and understands 100% that the power of this government sits out here. It doesn't sit up here at this table. Y'all rule over us because we allow you to rule over us. Y'all are here to put our things that we want into play. There were a couple council members that specifically stated that they couldn't believe that people of this city, which, by the way, out of the past couple of years, the last three meetings that specifically dealt with the barge, this is the most Seabrook citizens I've seen show up and attend these meetings. And they're going to continue to grow. These people are here to make sure that you receive and understand the directive, regardless of your personal opinions, political affiliations. Now, one thing I do want to make sure I do right now publicly, because it occurred publicly, and I'm going to point one person out. Sir, in the back, I do apologize for getting frustrated with you and raising my voice when we were discussing it earlier. One thing that will always hit me in the heart and make me angry very quickly is when somebody wants to judge how somebody chooses to worship God. And that decision does not happen in this room. Where, when, or how, that does not happen here. Now, the ordinance that we're asking for you guys to overcome and give us a variance on to be able to put covering up for our church is something that we do need to happen in here. And the fact that the barge is now limited to very limited amount of food and kitchen space, they're going to need to be able to charge some cover charges to make up for that difference. They still have a rent to pay. They still have electricity. They still have employees. They've got people that still aren't able to work. And so, I fully understand that the perception is that things are going to go crazy, and you give barge an inch, they'll steal two miles. And that's just not the truth. When we talk about the things that have come up, and you ask anybody to provide me with something recent, three years ago, were there problems? Yes. Mike and the Robinson brothers both will come up here and tell everybody, absolutely, there were problems three years ago. Those problems have been addressed. And as I stated, the last time I got to come up here and speak on the subject, they have been handed hurdle after hurdle to jump over, and they have done so. If you don't mind me letting me finish, give me a few more seconds, please. They have done so. And I can't tell you the last time that anybody has actually been able to truly complain about a single thing in the last year and a half to two years that has occurred on barge property. Not a single noise violation, nobody coming up here saying that they recorded recent cursing from their home. And when asked, sir, whether or not you could actually give me a recent number, something that he's recorded recently from his house, there's not a direct answer. And the reason there's not a direct answer is because there's not one. Nobody can provide evidence to the contrary. And if you can, please show us, so that way, we can remedy that as well. Thank you. Y'all have a blessed day.
Appreciate it. Thank you. John Bartlett. John Bartlett?
John Barnett, 22 Lakewood Lane, Seabrook. You know, I came here, and the warehouse thing, I was just curious about that, and I heard all of the complaints. And, you know, I can understand what they're talking about, because we had those same complaints when we were fighting the port a long time ago. And of course, they recalled that, city council, and look what we got. We got the port. And we didn't get $27 million worth of infrastructure that the port was going to give us. I was on the negotiation group with that. Okay? So, just keep that in mind. But then, you're talking about the traffic and the noise and all that. The barge, I'm sorry, by the way, your friend, I do have a recording. I will get it to you. And it wasn't two years ago. They were cussing after 10:19 about they're not going to close the barge down. That was just recently, too. But the reality is, is that the same complaint that you people have with Mystic Village, which I agree with, you got to realize that the people that were there before the barge took over. Now, the very first time I came to Seabrook, I was at Lance's place. I actually became friends with him. But he kept everything within the barge. He didn't build a stage without getting permit. He didn't build this and that without getting building permit. He didn't put a sign up without getting building permit. But the barge historically seems to do that. They don't really care about the law. And of course, they went to court, and they lost in the court. So, I got to recognize that. So, here we are, you know. We have a group of businessmen that came here and followed the proper rules. And from what I heard, some very good ideas came out of this group about the road, traffic, and turnaround, and I totally agree with that. But you know what? Come by my house at 2:00, my friend, and hear the burnouts going by my house, and hear the wrecks and the turns, and the screaming boom boxes, too. I bet it's the same sound level. I wouldn't leave my house at that time of night, because I'd get run over. So, we have a twofold thing, the way you talked about it for your neighborhood versus my neighborhood. So, as a lot of these guys know, I'll come up with a way to pay for it. Recently, Seabrook paved the road into Lakewood Yacht Club, and one lady said, "How horrible." Well, there's 52 homes in Lakewood Yacht Club. We all had to write money to get that road widened. Why did we want the road widened? Because there's too business there that park their semis all the time. And being an old road like it was, it was very narrow, and we literally had to sit there and wait for the semi to unload their products. So, we forked out of our pocket and all that stuff. And then, we got down to Toddville. Now, the city has a lot of roads there. They were in very bad shape, and they had to pave those. I have a rental house down there. Lo and behold, I had to pay $1,000 to tie into the Seabrook road that they raised to make sure it was even. And half that driveway is actually city property, which I had to get permission on. So, what I think the city council should do, so we cannot have to build the warehouse necessarily, because we're short on funds, I think you're doing this park, I think we need to put a surcharge in the neighborhood. So, you got some other projects I see there for skateboarding. I think we should have a surcharge on that. And we fix the road, we should put a surcharge on that. I'm sure those people like that. But that's the reality of the whole thing. So, either we get money somehow to fix things, because if you notice, Hooters, which was the number one Hooters for many years, is closed up because we have this big bridge that we're stuck with. So, the city does have to look for money. So, keep that in the back of your mind when you give your speeches. Thank you, city council, for sitting here and listening to all this. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on. 1.1, mayor, city council, and our members of city staff may make announcements about city-community events. Rob?
All right. It is Tuesday, which means tomorrow is Wednesday, August 7th. From 11:00 to 12:00 at Evelyn Mater Library, you should go by and see the first responders' day. All the first responders, the police, the EMS, the firefighters, they'll have their vehicles there, they'll have all layouts and displays. I understand they're even having a K-9 team come in. It'd be a great thing for the kids to go visit, be the great thing for the grownups to go visit, stop by. Between 11:00 and 12:00 tomorrow, Evelyn Mater Library. Also, Saturday, August 17th, coming up, movie night at Mater Park. The movie selection is Paw Patrol: The Movie. Something about growler, whatever that dog is, I don't know. But Paw Patrol: The Movie, Saturday, August 17th at 7:00 p.m. The Seabrook Policeman Department program starts at 7:00. The movie actually starts at 8:00, because it's not dark at 7:00 yet. So, go see the movie, go see the first responders. Did I miss anything?
Give up? Thanks, Rob. Okay. 2.0, I have a presentation to the EcoStar Award to the Seabrook Trap and Neuter Release sponsors and caregivers, as recommended by Open Space. Please come up, ladies. Okay, for those of you who have never noticed it out in the lobby, on the wall halfway up the wall in City Hall is a framed tree with golden leaves, established several years ago to recognize our EcoStars, the people who work to conserve Seabrook's natural environment and abundant wildlife. Bonnie Frankham and her team of volunteers are making contributions to the city of Seabrook's 2024 Pilot Trap Neuter Release Program, addressing the problem of feral cats at the Point in Seabrook. They are now being recognized as EcoStars by being named on the gold leaf of the tree at City Hall. They were nominated to receive the award by the Open Space and Trails Committee due to their willingness to address inventorying the feral cats at the point, systematic trapping and spaying and neutering, seeking homes for the animals suitable for adoption, and identifying newly dumped cats for spaying and neutering to ensure the colony continues to decline. We thank them for their willingness to help the city address the feral cats on Seabrook Point. And now, as Mayor Seabrook, I award the Cats of Seabrook Point Group the EcoStar Award. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Okay, a presentation to the post-event report for the Texas Outlaw Challenge.
Evening, mayor. Council, Paul Robinson produced the Texas Outlaw Challenge event. This was our 17th annual event, and for 16 years, I've been giving you this nice binder that's easy to read, and you pass it around. But this year, we're doing PowerPoint, so you'll have to deal with what I have produced here for you. But just a couple of things off the bat. The weatherman was a bit against us this year. For two weeks prior to our event, it was hurricane, it was storm, and then it was something called a tropical cyclone. Anybody know what actually that is? I don't know myself. But all of a sudden, the night of our late registration, the skies opened, the water went down, the surge went down, and we had one of our most beautiful weekends, and had all kind of late registration from Louisiana and Dallas all come crowding in. So, we had a great turnout for our 17th annual, and I want to thank the city for your support again this year on how that went. So, we'll go through a few slides that are in your package, of course, that you have in front of you that you can review later. But a couple of things important there I want to pull out is, we're always concerned about room nights. This is hot tax funds that helps us advertise. And how we do room nights is we look at our registration form and who's from out of town. And this year, about 50% of the people had out-of-town addresses. So, we know they stayed in our area, specifically Seabrook. I don't have data on that. We're hoping to improve that next year with the promo code. We're hoping to improve that next year with the promo code that you've asked us to do. We've set that up with Quality Inn so far. We hope to get some others involved with that. Been in our metrics, we take half the people that participate. There's always a couple involved, usually with a boat. And then they have riders, some are singles, some are other couples, and we do that metric and we divide it out, who would grab a room by themselves and who would grab a room with their spouse or their partner. And we come up with our numbers and those are how we get our room nights. We also did the third year of our fishing tournament this year, which was another huge success. We had 150 fishermen, about 30 odd teams, and had a great event, but also had an overnight because our captain's meeting was the night before the actual event that kicked off 6:00 in the morning. So we had those tacked onto these numbers as well. So those are the descriptions in our accommodations. I also list the food and beverage, and this is really what the participants themselves expand while they're in our area to our businesses, our fuel, our groceries, our, our bars, our restaurants. So those numbers are in here as well. The event uses as much of the area, Seabrook, of course, of the revenue we spend on rental equipment. We do tents, we do food, we do a production company that actually helps with this summary put together is, is Dryden Event Productions out of Seabrook. Yola Dryden, very talented lady. So she helps me put this product, this program together here for you tonight. Advertising, how do we spend the dollars that you send us? How do we generate those people, the message to come to this event? Those numbers are here as well. Over $100,000 worth of that effort in those numbers. I will mention right now, because I think I mentioned it prior to last year, was how we receive the money from Seabrook. I think it's a 75, 25% on the breakout. And I use the analogy of, of a farmer. And farmer, you know, advertising is the seed for the farmer. That's success. It's seed. And it's a little hard, you know, to take away from your event fund to spend on advertising, which is how we are required to spend, on seeds when the payment of receiving those remainder of the hot tax dollars come after the event. Just something to think about. It's, it's, it's an interesting management on my behalf. It does take away because I need to spend more, more money on the seeds, the advertising to get the people here. But hopefully, the product is what's successful for all of us. So we'll go to a couple more charts here. These are numbers on cost. Again, we have the food and beverage, we have shipping, we have accommodations, safety, security, and advertising. Again, just more information, I think it's important to share with you on how dollars are spent. The next chart is a summary of, next year will be our 18th year, so the 20-year title on the next chart, please, is year to year. We have a few years to go there at the end of the chart on the third one. But those are levels of what's happened with this event in the past with your support. So it's been very, very successful. It's had building years, it's had some peak years, it's had some fall off years, it had COVID, of course, and now we're on the upswing again. And what's missing from those numbers from this year is the actual number of advertisers that came with boats. Those numbers didn't get into our numbers. But of course, they're part of our participants and hotel guests as well. The next chart is marketing. Where do these dollars get spent and what are the results as far as reach, clicks, if you will, shares, if you will, if you use the social media language? These are the results. These are real numbers. This is what is put together, again, by the Dryden Production Company here in Seabrook. They track everything we do. So if you go through the next chart as well, you'll see TV, you'll see radios, you'll see magazines, you'll see social media, you'll see direct interface at other events similar to ours that we market this event to and draw those people from out of state to this, this particular event in June. So those are the numbers that are quite large when you think of the dollars we spend and the reach that your logo, your link follows, all these shares. So just look at what your documents and your efforts do within the city on how you want to contact people. We're doing a great job for you and I think the message is getting out there very well. The last couple of pages here, there's event program, which we had last year. Again, a summary of, of the attendance minus the sponsor boats that came with, with additional folks. The next page is just a copy of our permits. We give, of course, the event insurance with the city covered as additional insured. Always, we've had that every year. And we always have a, a marine permit for our, our shootout on a clear lake where seven cities around the lake designate no wake zone for that Friday morning. Talking about the shootout, we had a great addition this year with the Lakewood Yacht Club inviting us to host the raceboats on Friday morning. That was just a phenomenal bar raise for the whole event, kicking it off that Friday morning. We had continental breakfast. One side story is they fired the cannon, which I didn't know anything about, but I was told about it, but I forgot to tell this one race team, hey, they're firing a cannon at 9:30. And you should have seen this, and the boats were idling. You should have seen this person, the engine hatches were up, he wondered what piston came out the side of his motor when that cannon went off. But they really treated us just red carpet at Lakewood. And that's just so great to be included with the Seabrook effort that we do. So going on to the fishing tournament. Couple of quick slides there. This is our third year of the tournament. It used to be just a fishing tournament, but we were told by oil and gas industry, petrochemical along the channel here, that they had salesmen who were golfers and they only talked to customers who were golfers in their networking outreach excursions. Golfers talk to golfers on the golf course. That's a, that's a common thing. Fishermen talk to the fishing client and hunters go dump hunting or skeet shooting or whatever, they talk to that customer, but never do they connect. So we thought we'd do a tournament that had all three. So we did. And boy, did they, they ever love it. They fish from 6 till 10, where they weighed their fish, and they had designated shooters who weren't allowed to go to the bar as soon as they got off the boat. And they went to the skeeting range. And this all happened at one location at, in San Leon, at Top Water Grill, all of our favorite place there. Robert encourages us to have the event. And for the golfing challenge, Clear Creek Conservation, the, the group that Outlaw Challenge supports with some, some support dollars every year, brought their cleanup barge and we put a kiddie swimming pool, a little blue, big swimming pool, on this barge and anchored it offshore at Top Water Grill. And every team got six balls to try and get a hole in one. And for every hole in one, they added a pound to their fish. For every clay they hit in the skeet, they added a pound to their fish. So it was a tremendous concept to just test and see how it was. Well, it's, it's, it's going to be a monster. It's going to be great this year coming. So a couple more metrics about that. Again, very important, how do we market something like this with advertising dollars? And as you can see, and the numbers of impressions, views, likes, circulation, just add those up. It's, we, we focused so much on that in the 11 months prior to the event that I think we're getting a great reach and a great response. And we're very proud of that. So on the last page, there's some of the shots from the, the fishing tournament that you support. And I think you'll see great things of that in the future. We look forward to you considering our support again of us for 2025, our applications in. And that's it. Thank you very much. I'll leave this with someone who wants the coloring book still.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
3.0, the consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of July 15th, 2024, July 16th, 2024, July 22nd, 2024, July 23rd, 2024, and the July 31st, 2024 meetings.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Old Business, 4.1, presentation of the city council audio visual pilot program analytics for the recording of city council meetings and consider and take all appropriate action on the continuation and any changes to the program.
All right, Mayor, Mick's going to come up. I just wanted to kind of preface her presentation. It's been a pleasure to have somebody with her expertise as we've rolled out the filming. So she's going to give a presentation with some information and then we'll get into any comments that you may have among yourselves, but she's got a ton of information I'd like for her to run through.
Now I understand why it makes so much noise when people are up here. Okay. I am Mick, it's short for Michelle, and I am the multimedia producer, as Gail said. And essentially, as a high level overview of the pilot program, we had 18 council meetings recorded. Across those 18 meetings, we had 4,366 total views, 958 hours technically, where did I have it? Oh, 900, it was 958 hours, 38 minutes and 42 seconds, I believe, total watch time. The average view duration is 13 minutes, 10 seconds. We had 30 subscriptions, where that is people subscribing specifically off of the video subscribe button located underneath near the description, and 166 shares. The agenda item attachment that you had, had information from Monday, July 29th, based off of when the agenda needed to be submitted, the agenda item needed to be submitted. So these are updated as of 9:00 this morning. Here we have just kind of a list of our recordings with how many views they received within the first 24 hours. There were issues during the February 7th. If you have questions, I will be able to answer that issue. However, that was made up during the joint council meeting with planning and zoning on July 2nd. So we still ended up with 18 open to the public. Here's another way of showing the breakdown of our recordings and how many views they received. The colors based off of how many views were received within the first 24 hours, then the first week, and then what remains. These are updated. The agenda attachment was July 29th, and this is as of this morning at 9:00 AM. We announced the program officially to the public on February 26th. Here you can see what it looked like on the front page and our city news announcement. Here is what it looks like on Facebook. You can see within that square, it does say it was published on Monday, February 26th, as well as the general reach impressions and all of that that occurred for that specific Facebook post. This is what our agenda system as a software currently looks like. You can view it or go towards the database by going to seabrooktx.gov/councilrecording. Within the square on the side, you can click on an agenda item and it will actually take you directly to that agenda item in the recording. As well as within that same window, you can choose between the interactive agenda meeting management window that we have transitioned to. You can also view PDFs of both the agenda and agenda packet if you so choose based off of a little dropdown that's up there in that little corner. So why do we have someone in the control room? The control room switches cameras and changes graphics based off of what we have seen now during the pilot program. But beyond that, the person in the control room also monitors the network connection, making sure that all equipment is working as it should be. And in the event of live streaming, if that were to move forward, they would ensure stream health, again, going back towards network connection. We have a couple of different redundancies for whether or not the meeting is, or a couple different redundancies of meeting recording locations. And so that way, if there's one point of failure, we have a backup, but we still have somebody up there to check to make sure things are working. Here is an example across a couple of different cities of what their control rooms for council recordings look like. We have Surprise, Arizona, Testin, Colorado, and then our neighbors, Mont Belvieu and Baytown. And then, this is ours. I forgot to include it on the agenda attachment, but this is what ours looks like. Moving forward from kind of the general recap and broad little overview, there are certain costs that come towards the recording of council meetings, neither recording or moving forward with streaming, anything, there will be a cost impact. Currently, we are recording and uploading to YouTube. This is a free system. As far as everyone knows, YouTube has unlimited cloud storage based off of Google servers. However, as people have discussed across my industry professional networks, the resulting video files or one, if we stream resulting video files or just any video uploaded to YouTube is the property of Google, not the city. Also utilizing YouTube's free AI-generated closed captionings has incorrect words at certain parts. There's no custom dictionary, so it has a hard time with accents. It'll mishear people and you may end up with something completely different. We were reviewing closed captioning on a previous meeting and closed captioning for kills and wheels ended up kills and wills. Two completely different things. So streaming to YouTube is a cost or replacing a YouTube, if we choose that path, would result in a cost. Since YouTube video is not property of the city, we would also want to make sure that we have local off-cloud storage of these recordings. Talking with the Director of Information Technology, we are looking at around $6,500 for a one-time cost to get that server built and established specifically for video recordings. And Public Information Act is in regards of if council decides to open up any comments or chats, they would fall under public information and so records would need to be retained towards that. The city currently utilizes Archive Social by Civic Plus, and that covers all of the city's social medias. There are current limitations, which is 3,500 records per month. That gets into things, it does include YouTube comments. But as the city grows, if we end up with more engagement across all of our social medias, our multiple Facebook profiles, our Instagram, any of those, we could be approaching those records and then that would affect the cost. And then, as example of today going on right now, we have concurrent meetings occasionally, so multiple meeting locations if the, the policy of the pilot program resulted in or included whether or not to include other boards and commissions. If we move forward with other boards and commissions, we would need multiple meeting locations purely based off of an example of today, where we have planning and zoning also conducting their meeting in another room. So that would need to have equipment to record or and/or stream. We also currently have Open Space and Trails meeting at Public Works. They could move to city council, but just as we currently have at least three different locations for public meetings, including the concurrent off-site. This PEG channel and public meetings, so this is in relation to our PEG funds. PEG funds, Public Educational Government Channel Funding, is very specific. It is separate, it is considered a special fund. It has very specific uses that goes towards the equipment to be placed on the PEG channel. We currently have a PEG channel through Comcast Channel 16. That is our government channel. And that is what is supplying the PEG funds. In order to utilize PEG funds for anything beyond the channel involves making sure that it also involves the channel. So one of the things that I'm proposing and I have budgeted for, for this upcoming year's budget, is replacing our current PEG channel system, which does have the ability, if council so chooses down the line, to scale up to include online features. And that, because the system is the PEG channel system, that would be able to be cost paid for out of PEG funds, which is also how we afforded adding the cameras and everything this year. everything this year. Since the policy includes whether or not to allow comments, I thought it would be wise to include a frequent point of contention across multiple municipalities and multiple levels of government, is how chats and comments could affect Texas Open Meetings Act. This is text-heavy. I will, example. There are certain things, undisclosed conversations, record-keeping purposes, equal access, miscommunication, disruption, so on and so forth. Recommendations to ensure compliance with Texas Open Meetings Act and the Public Information Act, which it definitely falls under, would be making sure that we have those designated public comment periods. With a chat, it wouldn't really work. However, they would be allowed to submit written statements, which if you go to seabroxtx.gov-publiccomment, we do include that a resident may submit an email for public comment at least two days before the meeting. There are ways to submit written, non-verbal, public comments, which does also follow with the pre-submitted questions. And then, if we move forward with the live streaming, or even if we just keep with recording, we can have information that kind of shows before council officially starts, because we currently record roughly two minutes before council starts, and then that way, make sure that there's enough time that we get the gavel hit and all of that. And so, we could utilize those times by showing slide information with the proper ways of presenting, or, yeah, presenting public comment. So, the current staff timeline for how this works is, as you see, roughly, it takes six to eight hours per meeting, and I am currently the only person that handles this. So, if we maintain the pilot program as-is, which is only City Council meetings, it's recorded and then published and released the day after, with two scheduled meetings per month and only the two scheduled meetings per month, we're looking at roughly 12 to 16 hours staff impact per month. And again, this is only considering two regular council meetings. This month has been a lot. And so, that's definitely higher than the 12 to 16, which is fun. If we adjust to include livestream, the staff impact actually doesn't change all that much. Just the bits that happen between council ending and the video going live with the indexing and putting it up on YouTube, all of that would instead happen as the meeting is happening. So, it's roughly about the same staff impact per month. If we adjust to include recording other boards and commissions, again, I am currently the only person running this, we are looking at 30 to 40-hour staff impact per month in regards of only five regularly scheduled meetings, two City Council, one Open Space and Trails, one Planning and Zoning, one EDC. And that's 30 to 40 hours per month. And this is just kind of showing recommendations would be potentially finding a media intern or a contract employee, maybe those meetings that aren't City Council, not have the graphics or the camera changes, just ways to think about for consideration. And then, why am I up here instead of the Director of Public Affairs? I am the multimedia producer. I am within the Department of Public Affairs. I have a bachelor's in communication, specifically towards media production. I have worked in a multi-camera studio for a college-level sports talk show. I have helped teach college production classes in multi-camera studio control room settings. I also help produce and occasionally direct Sunday multi-camera live streams at churches. Did I say churches already? No, okay. And I help design, build, and maintain multi-camera production systems. And based off of my recommendations, as the subject matter expert, kind of showcasing my time with the city and my recommendations on moving forward, if we increase the capacity of our putting meetings up online. In order to try to make sure that I'm not the only person able to do this, there's training. I am currently training IT. I have officially kicked off that program. I have a member of IT up there switching the system right now. He's waving. And then, there's the rest of my department, including the Director of Public Affairs, as well as to a minimum, or a minimal level, the City Secretary. If something were to happen and no one else was available, they could at least do a minimum work. Then there's succession planning. One of the attachments that I had was our, my council recording guide, that is just kind of showing the amount of work that I have put in towards process streamlining, as well as preparing anyone who is not myself to operate the system. And then, contractor versus part-time. If we get somebody that would require training, or contractor would be somebody who I would find that already knows in the same way that I do. So, your considerations based off of the pilot program is whether or not to continue video recording City Council, whether or not to livestream, or record and upload after, whether or not to turn on live chat and comments, which are two separate things, if you wish for clarification on that, and whether or not to expand to all boards and commissions or continue with City Council only. Thank you.
Thank you, Mick. Any questions, council? Mick, hang on.
Mick, sorry if you don't mind coming up. Just to clarify, the live chat and the comments, so that would be, somebody would be responding on the live chat?
So, in regards to live chat, if we had it open, it would be most likely unmoderated. If we had a moderator, it would need to be another position in the control room. The person in the control room would not be able to handle running the meeting as well as looking at the comments. There wouldn't really be any engagement, because this would just be kind of people putting in their thoughts. Something to keep in mind is that doing a live chat during the meeting would be the same as allowing people in the gallery here to talk and conduct their business, as they so choose. And so, current legal counsel believes that turning a live chat on would not impose any problems with the Texas Open Meetings Act, as long as those comments are not read into record.
Gotcha. Okay. So, the PEG fund, do we, I know we used to have a pretty steady revenue coming in there. How is that looking, that fund?
So, we are supposed to be receiving quarterly updates from our franchise providers, being Comcast. As far as I have been able to locate, we have not received any of those, so we're just kind of seeing as the numbers come in. We are still currently looking at about 30,000 a year, I believe, but it is on a steady decline.
Okay, just because of the viewers, the amount of viewers?
Correct.
But we still do produce the video to channel?
Correct.
Okay. And can we use the PEG funds for the server cost? Would that be an option?
Equipment, yes. Yes.
Okay, so that's $6,500, just in case YouTube decides to go away, or whatever. We could
Correct.
Use that fund from there. Okay. And then, do we get any money for the subscriptions that are on YouTube?
We do not engage in monetization or any of that through YouTube.
Oh, okay. Also, you said there was 30 different locations for meetings?
Three.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Okay. My suggestion would be to council for, we just coordinate City Hall and make sure nobody's meeting at the same time, in my opinion. But also, this pre-submitted comments, can you go over that again?
So, as of right now, the way that residents are able to submit public comments officially is coming to an open meeting, writing their name on the list, and then having their four minutes to present during item 1.1, or 1.0, public comments and announcements. We also have the availability towards submitting an email to, I believe it's cdc@seabroxtx.gov, with the information and what the public comment should be, or what they want the public comment to be. And then, during the public comment section, it would be read into record during the meeting.
Like, one of us would read it, the mayor? How would that work? I've never seen anything like this, so, this is new. Okay, that's interesting. And that's already being, that's already in place?
It's on seabroxtx.gov-publiccomment. As of right now, it hasn't
Probably been used.
Correct.
Nobody knows about it. Okay. And just, just to clarify, what, I know, so you're the multimedia producer, what else do you, are you responsible for?
I am known as the videographer of the city. Let me pull up my job description. So, I am the official videographer for the city of Seabrook. I help purchase and maintain video cameras, all of the camera equipment that the city has. I'm starting to manage the PEG fund and budgeting and all of that. I also help with the Department of Public Affairs with social media. I am the backup Public Information Officer during times of crisis. I am one of the EOC essential personnel, and I help with city events.
Okay, yeah, so you have a lot. But do you think that the, adding the two, or just say, two or three additional committee meetings would be doable for your schedule?
Based off of my research that I have seen, I do believe that there would need to be changes, but that goes into policy, and I defer to the city manager.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions for you. I just want to tell council, you know, I'm passionate about this, and I do, would like to see us vote for live streaming, especially if it's not adding anything to her, the time for that, but it also gives the public full transparency. And also, I would like to see us to turn on the comments, but if there's a way to put on there that we don't respond, or the city won't respond to comments, but you just allow for public opinion, I think that's also allowing transparency. I saw that state of the city, that the mayor did, I don't know if the other council have seen that, but, because we didn't know about it, I just came across it actually on accident. But there's comments on that one, commenting on that one, but they're not on ours, so I just, just want council to know that it's kind of pick and choose right now. And also, the, I would like to see the three, I'm gonna ask for the moon, Open Spaces and Trail, Planning and Zoning, and EDC to be recorded committee meetings, but again, not having to click for each item agenda like you have to do, that takes up so much more time, that you don't have to have the graphics like she suggested, so.
And then, in regards to that, I did with the control room, even if we don't have somebody up there changing it, we do still need someone up there to make sure that the equipment's working.
Right, okay, right, right. But it's a little bit less, right, okay. That's all I got? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Any other? Are you gonna go up? Go ahead, Matt.
I support continuation of recording public meetings, absolutely. And if there's no additional costs to live streaming, then I don't see a reason not to, although I don't, I could make a strong argument to do it if there are a dollar figure attached. As far as all the other committees, there's gonna be a cost attached to that. I want to know what that is before fully support that. Regarding comments, absolutely do not support comments. The reason being, people sign up, they do what they have to, to speak in front of council. And if we have comments running through the feed, what's the benefit? Because if all of us up here don't have the opportunity to see them, and I mean all of us, then none of us should. What we can have is a series of comments, a thread there, that two or three of us are seeing, and nobody else is. That's, that, I'm sure violates something. Well, if I'm watching, if I'm watching the live feed and reading the comments, and you're not, that, that doesn't seem the right way to make a decision. If there's a comment that should be brought in, brought in to assist us to make a decision, plan for it, do it, we want to hear it. But if we're not responding to comments, we can't see them during the meeting, then I'm not sure I see the benefit of adding that additional cost of adding comments to it.
It's not additional cost, though, to add comments. You just turn it on or off.
So, what's the benefit to the comments?
To allow for public opinion.
So, the issue, or the potential contentious point that many municipalities have, is whether or not those, those comments, public opinion, are seen by council members during the meeting, and then being read into record, then it runs the issue. And then, the Open Meetings Act does say that in regards to public comment, just in regards of somebody coming up and having the list, we, the City Council cannot discriminate against speakers based off of what they have within those lists. It would, could be argued to be similar in regards of seeing a chat. You can't pick and choose which comments you would see.
Right. I'm not for the live chat, just so you know. I just think being able to have public comment after the meeting, just like a normal video getting posted, and you have comments section, like, dislike button, or comment, you know? And we wouldn't be able to see that until after.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, and that is the difference between live chat and comment.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have no problem with the live streaming, but I'd like to know the, like Rob said, the cost, you know, just to come down to a dollar figure and say, if we need extra personnel, equipment, whatever it's gonna be on an annual basis, we're into the budget cycle. The other thing on the chats, if I were to get on my phone and dial into City Hall to see live streaming, I'd see the comments, could I?
You, yourself as a council member?
Yes. If I'm sitting up here, go on, go to City.
If you go to the YouTube page specifically of the video livestream.
Right, then I'd be able to see it. So, I'd be able to see comments. This would be a question to council, would this be a violation of anything?
So, I think, I think the issue is, are you all looking at the same comments?
No, I'm just talking about me. Everybody else can't see it, and I get on my phone, and I dial into the city, and I start making, and I can see the live streaming, and I can see the comments. I'm the only one. And then, on a subject or anything like that, I start responding based upon that comment.
But you're in a meeting, too.
I mean, I don't think, right now, you could get on your phone and look something up, and I don't think that, that's not an Open Meeting Act violation for you to do that. So, I don't think that would be an Open Meeting Act violation, if only one of you was looking at it, but I think that's a bad system, if you're not all looking at the same comments.
Other school districts, CCISD, and other government entities all around us have the ability to comment. I just think that if we're gonna be transparent, let's be transparent, and not, you know, if people want to talk about the meeting, good, bad, or whatever, they should have the option.
I will say, during my research, I searched across multiple different entities, both at the county and city level, and there was general differences on whether or not they chose to have the live chat on, the live chat replay, and whether or not to have comments on. So, there were differences across the board.
I personally don't think it's a matter of transparency. It might be a matter of convenience, but if somebody wants to make comments like everybody did today, you can certainly come in and make their comments, we can all hear them, we can all react to them. But, but I don't think it's a transparency issue that you're talking about. I think it's a convenience issue of not having to come to City Council and speak. You know, I think that's, that's the way it's set up. You know, I, I don't have, I certainly don't have a problem with, with live recording. I think, you know, the time has come, and we should. I do think that the chat and the comment, I certainly don't mind comments at the beginning. I can read them, you know, if somebody wants to comment, just like they did tonight, I can read them in the record. Live chat is a little bit of a problem, I think, because it's just, I think it's confusing. I think it's, it's, we don't allow it here in council chambers while we are doing our, doing our process. And, you know, I think we're falling down a rabbit hole if we start that. And, you know, I, I think we're, we're falling down a rabbit hole if we start that, that, but I don't think it's a transparency issue. I think it's, I think it's more convenience. But I'm, I'm certainly all for, for video recording and, and live, live recording of, of a meeting. I never knew why we were waiting until the next day to put it online anyway. You know, it's recorded, so put it out there.
So that is just a general kind of YouTube best practice? City council can go anywhere for five minutes to technically 10:00 AM and then there's a vote to extend whether or not you choose? So by putting it at 10:00 AM the following day, it provides consistency and schedule for residents to know that it will definitely be there, as well as with city hall opening at 7:30, it allows city staff from 7:30 to 10:00 to make sure that the recording actually was good and correct and there weren't any issues.
Okay. The one gentleman brought up access for handicap, you know, for, is that part of this cost here?
So that is, if you go towards my PEG channel in public meetings, the proposed budgeted system that I am interested in does also have its own ability for closed captioning with a custom dictionary. It's just an expansion upon it. Otherwise, it's the, the YouTube that said keels and wheels is a mortuary system. Kells and Wells.
Mick, you're not giving me a comfort level. But, but, you know, if, if, is there any way to get a more customized?
With a cost.
But we have a fund for it.
I think it's important. But, but, you know, we need to, we need to know what that cost is. Okay.
Can I, can I just, I just have one question. Can you turn the commenting off until the video has been, is over?
So that is the difference between live chat and comments. The live chat is occurring only while it is live and being streamed. And then once the recording or the stream is finished, the live chat closes and comments open.
Perfect. I, I hope, that would be great, in my opinion. And then just to guy, to, to tell you guys on council, you know, when, if I go to the audio of any of these other meetings, of planning and zoning or EDC, and I'm around here a lot, I still don't recognize everybody's voices with the face. It's very, it's not transparent. So for us to not be recording these committee meetings that are very important, especially in the time like now, is, I think that's a problem. There's no reason why we shouldn't be doing this. And if we need to get the numbers to, to push it to the next meeting, which I don't agree with, but then let's do that, you know, to, to vote on the committee meetings, because we have staff hours that we don't have a dollar amount, which is what you guys are looking for, right? Is that correct? Right?
What I'd be looking for is total dollar impact, that needs equipment, time, et cetera, and personnel.
We don't have any additional equipment. We've got it all set up, right?
For this space, but in the event of joint meetings, such as right now, we would need a backup space.
Okay. Thank you.
Does this help with record retention? I mean, is it, is it easier to, to retain the, all of this rather than a, a written copy or a recorded copy?
I will defer to the city secretary who's in charge of records keeping.
Minutes are the permanent record of the meeting. The recording shouldn't probably be the recording of the meeting simply because it's storage and it's a permanent record that has to be stored permanently. So that becomes difficult if you're going to do that permanently. So the written recording of minutes is your permanent record and it does record everyone's, you know, actions during that meeting as far as actions, meaning votes on action items. So if that answers it, I don't know.
Okay, so your, your written becomes the official in the future? Well, I look back at a few and I made a motion and you, you didn't put that in. So, I mean, that becomes a pretty big deal.
The law requires that you record actions. There's actually no requirement to say who moved, whether they were seconded or any of the rest of that. The bare minimum legal requirement is this action was taken. The vote was taken and this is what the vote was.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's a matter of custom about whether you, what additional information you put in the minutes. It is common to put in.
Right.
A motion that someone made in a second, but it's not legally required.
I'm just, I was just getting a clarification, because if hers is going to be the official record, then I want to make sure it's correct, obviously, you know. I'm totally for this whole thing and I'd also like to have these committee meetings, like EDC and all the other ones, recorded too, open spaces and trails, whatever, because again, that's what transparency is. Everybody wants to know, obviously you're getting a lot of people here, been to many meetings, there's not a single soul in here. But, you know, there's a lot of meetings that people say, hey, I'd like to know what exactly happened and they, they, it's hard for them to find out. They start asking questions and, and then you have to kind of paraphrase and go through all of that. If they want to look at it, they can. So I think this is the best way. And I think we can find the money. If the PEG funds pay from probably 99% and if there's a little bit more that we have to come up with, I think we should.
Question, how long are the recordings retained?
As of right now, we don't officially have a records retention for video. I believe records in general is two years. However, I think from my research, it was either Public Information Act or Open Meetings Act does mention video recordings being three years.
So it'd be, so we have to maintain three years, right?
Yes.
Okay. That, I would like to add into the cost so we know the whole, the whole package.
There, there have been a couple comments tonight about PEG funds. I mean, we have to understand, PEG funds are essentially a tax on people that use cable. The cable cuts us a piece of that pie. Fewer people use PEG, use cable every year. We don't want to put a system in place based on PEG funds that could very well dwindle away to nothing in the next three to five years, depending on the pace of technology around us. That's part of the, as council members, we're supposed to be looking three, five to 20 years out, not just it today. And I'm concerned with using, relying on PEG funds because we have it now, but are we going to have it next year? Are we going to have it in five years? And if we don't, where's the money going to come from? I'm, I'm supportive of live streaming, of, if that's what we want to do, that's fine. I don't, I don't have a dog in that hunt of comments, but not live chat. But there's, there's two components to every board. If, if we go to video everything, one is the additional cost and one is the scheduling around court and everything else that happens in here. Are we going to have to have meetings at five o'clock in order to, well, if we do that, then that creates a whole different problem that's going to be an issue. I want to understand that problem and, and its complexity before I vote to record, to record all three. But the rest of the stuff, comments, not live chat, I'm supportive of.
And I'm the same with Rob. Thank you. Your words exactly, so I don't need to say anything else.
Just to clarify, PEG funds can only be used for this. It can't go to any other fund or anything else. So if we pay $6,500 for the, the server, we've already got the camera equipment in here, this is not going to go away anytime soon. We just have to do the little room over there to get the video equipment and I can't imagine it being that cost, costly. I mean, what else are we, besides the staff hours, there's no other cost?
Everything takes maintenance. Everything breaks.
Well, I agree with you, Jackie, but I'd just like to know what that number is, that's all. I mean, if, you know, it's like going to the store and you're going to buy something and before you pick it up and go to the cashier, you know exactly what you're going to pay. And I, that's all I'm asking.
Okay. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Should we go through each, since there's so many things we need to consider here? Should we go through, okay, I'll make a motion. Motion to livestream the council meetings with commenting. And I'll leave it at that for now.
Second.
What about other boards?
I'm going to put it on the next agenda.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Unanimous. Do I hear another motion?
Can I motion to, for the next meeting to discuss adding the committee meetings recording when we have more information about the financial aspect of it?
So we just need to, you don't, you don't need a?
Yeah, so we don't need another, okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on. 5.0, new business. 5.1, consider and take all appropriate action under first reading of ordinance 2024-17, a request for approval of the final plan at unit development to create a world-class freezer facility planned unit development comprising of 134.532 acres, or square foot freezer warehouse, 84 vehicle parking spaces and 19 tractor-trailer spaces located in approximately 7.9 acres of tract of land. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances for the city of Seabrook, Appendix A Comprehensive Zoning, Article 2 Administrative, Section 2.05 Official Zoning Map by rezoning 7.19 acres situated in abstract 52 of the Ritson Morrison survey in Seabrook Harris County, Texas, generally located west of Old State Highway 146, east of State Highway 146, north of Red Bluff Road and south of Port Road, and being more particularly described in Exhibit A from C2 Medium Commercial District and LI Light Industrial District to planned unit development for the development of 134.632 square foot freezer facilities, 84 vehicle parking spaces and 19 tractor-trailer loading spaces, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict therewith, providing for a penalty in amount not to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof by inclusion into the code and providing for severability.
I move to approve 5.1.
Second.
Can we have discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Before you guys get started, can I read into the record the official report of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, please.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission did meet August 6, 2024, right after the joint public hearing, and their recommendation is to, to council is to approve, the approval of the final plan unit development, final pub, to create the world-class freezer facility planned unit development comprising of 134,632 square foot freezer warehouse, 84 parking spaces, 19 tractor-trailer loading spaces located on approximately 7.19 acres tract of a land. The, the recommendation came with a unanimous vote of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Jackie?
Is there any way we can, since it seems like this is going to pass, we can make a, or demand or a request or to look at the traffic flow again and see if there is another thing, go back to design, see if there's any other options to get it off of Old 146?
Let me, let me make a statement.
Okay.
We have, I have been talking to TechDOT about that situation. TechDOT has, has looked at it. They are, they have a plan to try and alleviate some of the traffic. I'm not in total agreement of their plan, but they are making progress. From what I understand from them, and Gail, correct me, they're, this project is part of the, of the 146 expansion to the north that they're, they're already working on now. I, I would like to try and get them to speed up that, that part of the project, at least the corner, if we could get with them again and try and see if they can't push that piece of the project forward. So it's finished prior to this, if this is approved. I think it's, I, I think there's a chance that we can get something done, and I like the idea of the turnaround. We've actually discussed that, that corner at length for the past two years. It's been, it's been a problem for a long time. There has been numerous trucks in the ditch. And, and so I think, they were, they were open to discussion prior, prior to their putting a plan out. I think the plan is better than we have. I don't think it's perfect. I know that TechDOT will not allow them to make a direct cut onto 146, Old 146 from their, from their, or the feeder road from their, from their facility. It's, TechDOT allows only, only curb cuts, so to speak, certain distance away from intersections and they're within that intersection period. So they will, they won't allow that. It's been talked many times. We wanted even a street cut through there and they wouldn't do it. So I, I, I'm pretty confident that they will be open to discussion. I'm not saying they're going to be open to any changes at this point, since they already have a design out. But I think, I think there's a possibility that we can try and push that project forward a little, so this project isn't done prior to that. Again, no promises, it's TechDOT.
And just in the meantime, can we do?
Anything else?
Yeah, I just concur. I mean, the last time we spoke to TechDOT, which was about two or three months ago, they indicated that with this project going back to Spencer, that intersection was one, one year out before construction, so. But it's in full design, it is part of the package with that.
The TechDOT, that somebody mentioned about getting, are, are officers TechDOT certified? And is there any way we can put some, I don't know, are they? One of them?
Chief.
Just one? Is that a big, I mean, I don't know, if that's an option to get somebody to kind of start making it more frequent, to go over to that area so the truckers, you know, know that it's not a, just a pit stop and hang out and park on the side of the road and those, just so they, you know, because we, we can't keep adding all this truck traffic to this area and y'all know that.
One of the other problems, or one of the other issues I want to bring up is that, is the port. You know, the port is picking up projects, they took this one by eminent domain and, and, you know, they're moving further to the south every minute we talk. And I don't know what their plans are, they, they don't share those with us. I do know that what they put in is not taxable to the city. We, we will not receive any taxes from anything they build. We have an opportunity here to have, to be able to tax this facility, garner, garner ad valorem tax, even, even inventory tax, because most of the freezer stuff is moved out by the end of the month, right? So, so we have an opportunity to, to provide the citizens a, kind of a quiet tax base that we won't get with TechDOT, or with the port, I'm sorry, Port Houston. They will do what they want and it's untaxable. And that's my biggest fear. We don't know what it's going to be. On this, on this piece of property, it could be container storage. We've seen them stacked up over in La Porte and over in, or by Morgan's Point, you know, 30 feet, 40 feet high. And, and they, they need room. That's my biggest fear is we're going to get something like that in Seabrook. And so, you know, to prevent them from doing anything on any of these other properties, especially ones that are closer to the highway, is, is our opportunity and we won't see it again. We turn this down and I guarantee the port will be on that property tomorrow. So, you know, I, I, I had my druthers on traffic, but I think everybody in here, that's what they've talked about. They've talked about traffic. They haven't talked about noise, they haven't talked about anything else. The ugliness of a, of a, of a warehouse, they've talked about traffic. And if we can solve that one thing or try and alleviate that one thing, I think, I think this is the only thing that's going to go on that property, anywhere up there. You know, it's surrounded by warehouses, it's not going to be a shopping center. So, you know, I, in my opinion, we're, we're kind of headed down this road, we're being led down this road, and I think it's the best. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd just like to add on to what Tom said. I mean, the land that they took with the stables, for those of you who've been around here, the port again through eminent, eminent domain, but you can go further back to the 60s when Hubbell Oil and Refining started the Bay Port Industrial District and they got 7,000 acres. and they got 7,000 acres. Out there where the cruise terminal was going to be built was a place called Red Oak Terrace. These were homes out there, but they were seized. And if you read the, the, the plan of Hubbell Oil and Refining back in the 60s of what was going to be here, they had rolling steel mills and, and just whole litany of things. The land that is north of Red Bluff, if we can get something on every bit of that land, I mean, something of value, whether it's a warehouse or whatever, that makes it very difficult for the port to come in and take it through eminent domain because of the cost aspect that goes with it. But what Tom said about empties, drive down Port Road, any stack of containers over five high are empty. Look on both sides, and you'll see what we're talking about. And there's just so much land back there, and it's got to go somewhere. And believe me, I mean, they say hello to Seabrook, but their heart is right in the port, and that's what they're really focused on. I know, because I was here in 98. And I know the emotion and grief we went through then. As much as we tried, as much as we pushed, it's still, they just came rolling in. So it's really incumbent upon us to look at the big picture down the line.
Jim?
I originally voted yes for this, and no one was here. I think one couple was here. They talked against it, but it was just one couple. And so then we talked about the traffic, and then today, a whole bunch of people came in. And I've always said, and my history teacher and coach is actually here in the back, Coach Alhorn, and, you know, I learned at Balem entry, Seabrook Intermediate and Clearlake High School, government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. The people spoke, and so I'll be against it tonight because you haven't solved the traffic issue on 1, on 146. I understand it's TechDOT, and I know we don't control them, but I just don't think you can do this with, with how, what the people are saying. I know that is a little corner, and a warehouse is probably the best thing for it, but not the traffic part of it. So that's just how I, I view it, and I think TechDOT could easily fix it. But, you know, they're not going to even start that for over a year. So I don't want a warehouse going in before that, you know. That's just how I feel about it.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Passes. Thank you. Okay, I want to move executive session up to this point to confer with the attorney on, on some matters. So we are going to move 6.0, 6.1, Section 551.071, conduct a closed executive session to consult with the city attorneys regarding a settlement entitled City Seabrook versus Barge 225 and the yard, Barge 295. It is 7:40.
We've got a couple of people that had to make a pit stop here. We returned from executive session, no action was taken, it's eight twenty-three. Five point two, here a presentation, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval amended amendment to the agreement between the city of Seabrook and Driver and Rescue Club LLC. We see the property located at twenty-six thirteen and a half Nassau Parkway, operating as the yard at barge two ninety-five. For additional temporary conditional exceptions to codes and ordinances to allow covered, charged ticket sales as well as a temporary tent to be erected during the temporary agreement. Mike, come on up.
I do the, that's a copy of the judgment. I do have a copy that we, on a thumb drive if you guys would like to stick it on the screen, is that appropriate?
Are you talking about what's already attached to the public? I think I can do that for you. Is that what you needed?
The judgment's behind it.
Yes, section one, parts A and B, I think. Oh, sorry, there you go. Yeah. Let me get these glasses on, guys. Okay. All right. Good evening, members of council and mayor. Mike Robinson, owner of barge two ninety-five at twenty-six thirteen and a half Nassau Parkway, Seabrook, Texas. First, thank you for voting to allow a variance to operate in the yard while we repair the barge. You have no idea how important this is to our staff, who have now been out of work since July eighth, which is nearly a month ago. I moved here to Seabrook in nineteen ninety-seven to finish culinary school. I worked at Lakewood Yacht Club and Emily's Bistro, was on the opening team for the aquarium in Kima. Then I worked for Glazer Foods before my brother and I started our company Cardinal Culinary Services in two thousand and five. We were headquartered here in Seabrook off Capri Lane for several years. Next year will be twenty years in business for us. During that time, we've worked in the aftermath of every named storm that touched the Gulf Coast, helping to support the efforts to restore livable conditions to the areas we worked in. We held the emergency relief contracts for Galveston County, La Porte, Nassau Bay, Friendswood, and League City for several years, and we were also in conversations with Seabrook to support you as well. We've worked in almost every corner of the globe, providing hotel services for energy companies in some of the world's most challenging conditions, and for some of the world's largest companies in one of the most highly regulated industries. During that timeframe, we've created thousands of jobs and generated millions in revenue. To think that we couldn't negotiate a suitable outcome for our problems here in Seabrook is preposterous. I'm not trying to brag about what we've accomplished, I'm simply saying if we can work for companies like Shell Oil and Exxon and the most regulated business on the planet, sure, we can find some solutions to work here in Seabrook, Texas. I'm here tonight for several reasons. First, we are seeking permission to use a sixty-by-thirty-foot, one hundred and twenty mile-per-hour rated fire retardant structured tent. This tent will allow us to operate better in various challenging conditions, and to help make the yard more comfortable for our guests and staff. Secondly, we're here to review and request the variance or permanent relief from section one, items A and B, from the agreed final judgment between the city of Seabrook and Driver and Rescue Club LLC. Since there are several requests on the table, I'm asking that we address the tent first, and then move on to the next items. Is that possible? Okay. So, do you have any questions about the tent? Please ask now.
Does anybody have any questions, Scott?
I have.
Yeah, but, you know, do I hear a motion? Under ten?
Motion to approve the tent use.
Second. Okay, discussion?
I had a question. So, is your thought that you would be putting a stage inside there, and serving alcohol and food inside the tent?
No, sir. Well, various things would be happening inside the tent, but the tent would be set up over our existing deck outside. The deck would ask, is the subfloor, and we would have the ability to then either open it up, which is what we would prefer to do all the time, because we don't want to take away from why people come there in the first place. But I guess if the conditions got bad enough, we could close the sides. We would even have the ability to add air conditioning if necessary.
If you were going to air, I think the tent's a great idea.
It's a possibility that we will, you know, that will be there for us.
I think the tent's a great idea. I hope that that works for you, and I think there are other things that we need to probably discuss, but that's a great idea.
Thank you very much.
Any more discussion on the tent?
Just a question on safety for the installation, and I saw it was rated for one hundred and twenty mile an hour and all that. Is there a special crew that puts them in, or?
Yes, it's, from the tent company, from the rental company. Yes, sir. The company's name's N. Tents.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor of allowing the tent? Opposed? I didn't see you, buddy. Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Now, moving on to the next item. It's essential to establish a few facts in the timeline to understand better how certain parts of the agreed final judgment came to be. During our last discussion, we established that before the lawsuit between the city and barge two ninety-five, Gail had discussions with our landlord and me, stating that we were not violating the noise ordinance. Gail, can you confirm that you had that conversation with Debbie Reckert? Am I allowed to ask her a question? No? Okay, well, she did. Gail, since you can't ask, I'll still ask. Can you also acknowledge that the existing structures in the yard, the stage, the deck, the fence, and the covered areas were permitted and approved to be built? I'll answer that for you. They were. They're still there. They were approved. They were inspected. They still exist. We still have many residents that are under the impression that we just built our entire outdoor area without any permits or permissions from the city, and that is false, and it, that still causes grief between us and the citizens. You heard individuals speak on it earlier this evening. Another question for Gail, just one more thing. Can you please confirm that before the occupancy revocation, that you or any members of your staff had any conversations with our landlord or me regarding zoning, zoning definitions, or the operation of a large, of a live music venue? The answer to that is also no. We never at any time had conversations with any member of the city about zoning or proper use in the yard before we got our notice of occupancy revocation. The only conversations that we had at that time revolved solely around decibel levels. I would also like to establish that no member of council contacted any member of the barge team to question or discuss the situation before, during, or after our lawsuit. I'll readdress this in just a moment. As I mentioned last time, when I came up here and spoke, the entire situation was always about the noise until it wasn't. As I said previously, Sean Landis told me that if the sound study ordered by council came back and stated that we were operating within the limits of the ordinance, the situation would likely go away, or at the very least, council would vote to amend the noise ordinance. Again, there was never any mention of zoning definitions or improper yard use. I bring this up because I believe that the situation escalated to pivot from the fact that we were operating within the limits of the noise ordinance, which at the time was the entire crux of the discussions that we were having with Gail and her staff. Some important dates, on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, the city receives the results of the sound study to be discussed at the upcoming council meeting to be held on June first, two thousand and twenty-one. On May twenty-first, the city sends notice of the certificate of occupancy revocation for several violations in the yard relating, but not limited to unpermitted instructions, the modification made to existing structure, and modifications made to existing structures. And for the first time, we were told that we could not operate as an outdoor amphitheater due to current land use and zoning definitions. I accept full responsibility for the violations listed in the yard violation notice. As I have mentioned before, we used a contractor to perform the work, he did not pull the proper permits, and at the time, barge management was focused on improving the area's overall use efficiency and increasing the customer experience, but I could have done a more thorough job. The dates I just mentioned are meant to show a rapid escalation between the conversations about noise into what ultimately resulted in the city filing a non-noise-related lawsuit against the barge over matters that could have all been resolved through a few meetings and faithful conversations with the city, council members, and the community. Wouldn't the normal course of action be to send notice of violation to the offender and have that individual appear in front of a judge to answer for the offense, and then be subject to penalty handed down by that judge? Did you not have faith in Judge Greg's ability to oversee that process? At the time this was all happening, the business right next to us, Cabo, had a large palapa built without a permit. They also contributed to the noise issues that affected the community. We could easily argue that they were responsible, they were the responsible party for all the complaints that were occurring after ten PM when we shut our music down in the yard. It's interesting to know that they were not sued, nor did they have their occupancy revoked, yet another double standard and a prime example of selective enforcement. It's pretty easy to draw the conclusion that the actions taken by the city were designed to punish the barge and place us on the bottom step of a two-tiered justice system here in Seabrook. Instead of working on practical solutions to address the noise issues that were the root cause of the rift, this became a matter of personal interest to the city, and ultimately prevented conversations that could have led to an agreeable solution, saving taxpayers, the owners of barge, and the owners of barge over six figures each in attorney's fees and court's costs. Suing people or businesses should always be the last resort. There's an old saying, that only people who benefit from the lawsuits are the attorneys. I couldn't agree more. There's always a path forward through conversation and negotiations. You need two willing parties and the desire to see it through. After our occupancy revocations, I made numerous attempts to meet and resolve. At one meeting, attorneys from both sides drafted an agreed injunction similar to what was ultimately signed, and barge ownership and our legal representation were ready to resolve the matters. By this time, the council had already amended the noise ordinance, and the definition of live music venue was going to zoning board for approval. The city's decision to file the suit at that time was completely unnecessary, and we believe it was ultimately designed to bankrupt our company. I'm still shocked that not one member of this council ever tried to discuss this with us to confirm the narrative that they were told was accurate, or that the filing of this suit was even necessary, or to even help suggest a solution that worked for all parties. Isn't that one of the responsibilities of taking a position on this council? To bridge the gap between government, business, and the citizens? I realize that the members of this council and the mayor are unpaid positions. However, it is your responsibility to perform further due diligence when needed, and filing a lawsuit against a local business should qualify as one of those instances. I realize that the people might have considered me a challenge to deal with. That's what it looks like when people defend their livelihood. I know a lot is going on in this city right now, and city staff and members of this council are being questioned about many decisions that have been made. It appears that the situation between barge and the city is just one example of the city's government's inability to find common ground with its people and work towards a solution for all. We are solution-oriented. Since our problems began, we've attempted to provide many solutions to the set of challenges posed by the city. We were told we couldn't build bathrooms below base flood levels. We were told we couldn't build bathrooms below base flood levels, and the building department tried to quote FEMA regulations, which were later found to have been misinterpreted. The city can simply amend this ordinance, as other surrounding municipalities have already done. Why wouldn't the city want to enact an ordinance change that would allow its citizens and businesses to realize a cost-effective plumbing solution that would enable the construction of restrooms and house wash stations at base flood? We proposed multiple solutions over three years. You amended the noise ordinance to 65 decibels and created zoning language to prevent the operation of a live music venue unless specific criteria were met. We provided you with a detailed plan on how we could mitigate that sound and meet the conditions needed to operate as such, a plan that would cost us north of $250,000. You turned it down. Turn it down. What a concept. It's been claimed several times that we haven't done anything to mitigate the sound. This is simply not true. Even without the $250,000 investment we proposed, we've invested in high-end sound monitoring equipment and trained our staff how to use it. We request that our sound companies use down-firing speakers, which we have turned down. A straightforward and cost-effective solution. Even though we've been successfully operating at the newly amended DB levels, there are still some complaints. People claim they can hear words to the songs, and bass still reverberates in their home. Interestingly enough, the people of Red Oak Acres have lodged several noise complaints to the city regarding noise coming from Geon, a new electrical, a new electrical substation, and a nearby train. Those same people closely followed our situation, and when the 65-decibel amendment came to be, those people were told by the city that the state of Texas decibel ordinance is 85 decibels. Sorry about your luck. This is a double standard. I know this has been long-winded, and for that I apologize, but this entire situation has taken years for us to even get a chance to have this discussion. The actions of this council and city management have almost cost us our business. The citizens have organized a recall because of double standards, misinterpretations, failure to negotiate in good faith, and our situation is just a microcosm of a much bigger picture here in Seabrook. To close, I would ask that you refer to the agreed final judgment, section one, items A and B. We ask that you amend or repeal the language here and allow us to use the yard in a manner consistent with our rights. You have already imposed a new sound ordinance of 65 decibels, one that we are living by. You've also created the definition of live music venue in the zoning matrix, a definition that we have not assumed. To prevent us from charging a door fee, cover charge, drink minimum, or any other method that would allow us to try and recoup any of our operating costs, and cost of entertainment is unfair, and it was made to cause us financial harm and prevent us from competing with other local businesses whom are allowed to operate in that manner. The situation has finally come to a head. It's time to get serious and find a way that works for the benefit of everyone involved. It's time to make decisions that allow us all to heal and move forward from the mistakes of the past. We deserve the right to operate without fear of retaliation. This is your opportunity to prove that you have the capacity and willingness to be pragmatic in a time when the eyes of the entire city are upon you. I look forward to working with each of you in a manner that moves this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie, go ahead.
Well, with that, we were just discussing if they, you were to keep within your occupancy, and it wasn't like advertised on Ticketmaster, and you did cover charge on, at the door. I believe that is allowed, correct? It's not, as long as it's not amplified music out in the yard?
Well, it would be amplified. Everything we do in the yard's amplified. We just keep it at 65 decibels.
Okay. Well, within a noise ordinance, is that, am I telling him correct? Is that right? That we just said that that was correct, as long, he could do a cover charge at the door, not advertise for 1,500 people to come on a Tuesday?
We understand.
Right?
Like, we're very aware of our limitations as it pertains to occupancy and using, you know, special event-type status to put on events.
Right. So, just an everyday thing, I think you are allowed to do it currently. We were just discussing this. Is that correct? Am I saying it right?
I just, I want to better understand what it is you're trying to get to. My understanding right now
Yep.
is the yard area with a 30-by-60 tent that may or may not have the sides up, a food truck operating as a temporary kitchen until the barge is back where it needs to be, temporary toilets until the barge is back where it needs to be, and music on the current stage? Or what, is that roughly the vision for what you're trying to?
We, we have been, we've had music on the current stage
Yeah.
for years.
What's your plan for the next five months?
Well, we'd like to continue to use it in that manner, but we've been prevented from having any type of event because of our interpretation of that language. We can't have a snow day, armadillo races, you know, any number of events that you would try and recoup the cost of that entertainment at the door or through a ticket fee. We're not allowed to do that. Am I misinterpreting that, Mr. Olson?
I'm not Mr. Olson. Y'all want me to answer?
Sit in the seat.
Want me to answer his question?
Go ahead.
So, you were, you were represented by a lawyer. Your lawyer participated in writing this agreement.
Well, we agreed.
The court only entered into, the court only signed the order because it was an agreed order by the parties.
Yep.
So, and you're saying now that despite the fact that you agreed to that order, that you want the city council to say, hey, you don't have to do that. Is that, is that what?
That is what I'm asking. You guys wore me down financially, and we didn't really have any choices. You guys weren't, you know, there were certain things that were used to make it look like we were disobeying your direct orders of tearing down certain structures that were in our yard, but the entire time, we were simply waiting and hoping that they would review the plans and allow the buildings to stay. And it seemed like we were just completely disregarding those wishes, because I don't think that there was good communication.
So, again, the order that you agreed to says that you're not going to operate a music venue. That's effectively what it says, which is an outdoor music venue. You want to do that now, and you're asking council to allow you to do that. Council can do that if they want to go through and amend the zoning ordinance to give you a conditional use permit. That's the amendment that was made. It doesn't say you get to do a music venue in that zone. It says council can consider a request to do a music venue in that zone, and if it believes it can be done in a proper manner with proper conditions, it can grant you a permit. But in order to do that, they have to go through the same process that, I think you were here at the earlier part of the meeting. That was the process of making a zoning change. So, if your request is for council to make a zoning change, council can do that, but they, they can't just say, we don't want to enforce the zoning ordinance because the owners of the barge don't want to comply with it.
This doesn't exactly read like the zoning definition or the ordinance that we're talking about. There are similarities, but there's also other events that we could do that are not music-related, and I'm prevented from doing that. And that's what I'm seeking primarily relief from. But of course, I would also like to be able to have light music in our establishment as long as we don't exceed the posted occupancy or violate the decibel limits. It's really, it doesn't, I mean, you have, you have already put pieces in place that punish me for breaking those rules. If I violate the noise ordinance, I can get a ticket and pay a fine, or if I violate the zoning ordinance, you guys can come after me and I can get fined for that, too. Is that correct? So, why do you need that overarching language there that prevents me from, from being able to use the place like I really should as long as I operate within the confines of, you know, the definitions that we have?
What I'm telling you is, the city has a zoning ordinance that says a music venue, which is what you want to operate, is allowed in where you are with a conditional use.
Do you have that definition available of the zoning? I mean, maybe you should quote it.
The, the, from the, what a music venue is?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, Sean, I don't, I don't have that handy. I mean, there doesn't appear to be any argument that that's what you want to do. You want to have amplified music. You want to charge people tickets to come in, and you want to perform, have the music performed on a stage outside, and what else would a music venue?
I'm not solely speaking about the music here, but...
Well, that's what you're asking for now. So, I'm counsel, what, one of the things council was asking you for was...
Yeah, I guess in part we are.
Well, that's right. So, count, if you're...
We're asking for a modification.
In order to do a music venue? Is that true? If you're asking for something less, then you need to tell council what, less you're asking.
I told you what I was asking to do.
I'm sorry?
I've already stated what I'm asking to do.
Well, then it's clear. You're asking to operate a music venue. In order for you to be able to do that, council needs to amend the zoning.
I think there's a very specific requirement. There's a very specific language that defines the music venue. Maybe we should bring it up.
I mean, there's other establishments that have and operate music, right?
Cabo can charge.
Our neighbors.
Yeah, Cabo can charge a fee to enter their establishment and have music.
There was, the local barber shop had live music in his, you know, backyard at his business. Was he, you know, cited for operating a live music venue? I mean, there's the right to operate, right? There's certain things that, there's inherent, you know...
This language specifically was designed to prevent us from having any type of mu... I, I think it was unnecessary, and I'm arguing that point here.
If I can interject, can we separate music and event? Like you were talking about events that you were, you were saying that there are non-music that...
Well, that's right. Well, the, the, the language that was used does not separate those events.
I'm just saying, can we?
That's one of the issues we have with it.
Okay, what I'm asking, though, is can that be separated to where you can say, here the events are non-music, okay?
It, it can be, however, what that order didn't do was prevent me from charging a door fee, cover charge, or anything for music that I had inside the barge itself. It only pertained to the yard. I don't have the barge right now, so I'm asking for the ability to operate as if I would in the barge, just in the yard, as long as I'm obeying our occupancy and have all of the condition, met all the conditions to have people out there safely and stay within the decibel limit.
Would it be helpful if we did this, or for, would everybody be happy with adding this to the temporary agreement, and, you know, we revisit it after that's up?
To operate? To operate the yard as the barge was operated before the yard existed or while it existed? I don't think any of us would have an issue with that, while, if it's, if it's operated the same way. There's been a lot of miscommunication about what exactly you're asking for, how exactly it's going to be used. We have, we have this variance that's already been approved that was for six months. When it expires, what's the plan?
Well, when it expires, I mean, I'm asking, so, I think at some point, I'd like to have deeper discussions about the language that's in that injunction.
Well, that's something that we can apply for later.
Yeah, I feel you, but this is related to that, and it's the reason why we're here, because it's preventing us from doing what I would normally be doing on the barge in the yard, which is currently my only place to generate revenue. If I have musical acts or anything else there, I think I should be able to try and recoup costs for that, as long as I'm respecting the laws that are in place, respecting the neighbors, and providing a safe environment. So...
And, and that's what I was under the impression on when we first approved this recently and did this agreement with. So, everything that you were doing at the barge was just moving over to the yard, and that's the way I understood it as well. So, for you to, you guys are, I think there's a communication issue, and I think that's the other issue. We're concerned that we just don't want, like what they were saying earlier, is all of a sudden you got tickets out there, 1,500 tickets, and all of a sudden you got a major event coming in here, and that's a concern without us knowing it.
I respect, I respect that concern.
You know what I mean? So, and, and here we are. All right, that's, that's what, we, we need comfort level on that, because things have, we haven't communicated well enough between the two of us, and we need to do more of that.
I agree.
And I understand that.
I agree.
But we're trying to understand what's in here for you. We can't read your mind, and for us to understand what to vote on to, to move forward with, we need to communicate. You need to, we need to understand what you want, because here, hold on, here, you've already, we've agreed on something already for you last week. That's what you wanted. We did that, okay? Now, you're back here again wanting something else. So, to be clear, we thought that was everything you needed, because that's what you came for an agreement for. So, that's what we thought you needed. Okay, again, communication error between the two of us, okay? So, now here we are again, and we just approved a tent for you. That's a big tent. That's out of the ordinary that we typically do here. We're making adjustments for you to be able to operate, because it's hot. It's, I don't want your folks to be in there. I don't want them out there doing a mass or whatever. I need some air. But anyway, we're willing to help you. That's not the question here. You, we, again, just got to keep communicating with each other and work with this. Yes, we have some improvement to do, but we also need some communication. We're trying to work this out, and you can charge a cover, is what I'm understanding, as long as it's not a major event that we're doing. You could charge $5 or $10 when people want to come over and use. Again, as long as you're not breaking the law and causing havoc out there, then I don't think there's any problem here.
Well, the way...
That's why we wanted to clarify this, because
Absolutely.
the way that we interpreted this, we could, if, you know, dorms up there on Sunday, send your break on break. You would technically be...
Well, I think, I think the issue, I think the issue was, you know, when you said permanent. I mean, we're, right now, we're talking about a six-month reprieve to, to use the yard as the barge, and, and, you know, we increased the occupancy that was, it's beyond what the barge was, the occupancy now. You put in more toilets. You know, we've, we've, we've kind of given you everything you've asked for, but when are, when are you going to stop asking?
Well, we needed clarification, to be honest with you, because the last thing we wanted to do, I mean, Mike said that he was under the impression that we were already had the ability to operate in the manner in which we're currently asking. That was not our impression. So, when, you know, we, we want to make sure. We don't want to end up here again. We don't want people pissed off, yelling at us, saying, you can't do this. Look at this order. Look at this injunction.
Mike, when you came, when you came to us last week, or last meeting, you asked, you know, I need, I need help keeping my employees employed. I need help serving food and beverage. I need help with restrooms. I need help with occupancy, and we did. We gave, you know, we, we bent over that. The tent, no problem. You can charge, you know, you can charge a cover charge if you have a crawfish boil or whatever. You can have a band that is, is non, you know, non, some hard rock band.
Some big headliner, so I, I understand that. Well, that...
And, and that's correct. You were, you had bands at the barge. I was at the barge. There was a three, three-person band out on the deck.
Certain language is very...
There was nothing, there was nothing to that.
I mean, because of the issues that we've had, I want to...
So, so, so my, a suggestion was made, an executive session. We sit down one...
You can't talk about executive session.
And, my concern is this...
And I'll be in jail.
But my concern is this, is that what we're granting to barge 295, how does that apply to the rest of the city? Because there are other venues that have wanted live music, and it is just not compatible with the geographic area that they're in. And I'm not yay or nay in one way or another. I'm just saying, we got to consider the city as a whole. And also, the legalese, and I'm not an attorney, but I really think that, and this again, this is just me talking, is if we could just kind of get together in a private meeting and for you to get spec, you know, I know what you want, I think, and that's the big thing, I think, is to get in a meeting and say, okay, here's what we need, line it out, get it in writing, and then we can say, take a look at it and say, yay, we can move forward, no, we can't. Or, yay, we can move forward, but we're only going to move forward this much, whatever, and try to satisfy your needs as well as represent the rest of the city.
That's definitely the right attitude. I can tell you that. I don't think that we've had that between us up to this point.
I can assure you, we would like to get that done.
Well, that is fantastic.
Well, and, and again, I, I think everything you, everything that you had at the barge before the barge sank is what we've allowed you to do... is what we've allowed you to do temporarily at the yard. I mean, if, if, if you had five, four-person bands at the, at the barge, you can have those. You can, you, you used to charge a cover charge to go into the barge on certain areas, on certain days. You can still, you can still do that.
And the language that you had, though, was specific to the yard. So, there has to be clarification here. And we've dealt with ambiguous language before, and it can come back to bite you in the, in the butt.
Well, I think, I think the issue is that, and, and this is just my opinion, is the issue is the separation between the barge and the yard. You know, the barge is what you've asked to bring back. You know, you've asked for a temporary reprieve because until the barge gets, gets floated again and open, you've asked for a six-month reprieve to operate the barge in the yard. You're still allowed your special events at the yard, and, you know, you can have those larger concerts. You, I think you have four left.
We're grateful for that.
And, and, and so, you know, you, you're allowed to operate the yard as you were before also. And, and now you're just operating the barge as a temporary location in the, as the barge, not as the yard.
Understood. Now we have clarification and a lot of witnesses that have to give...
It's a, it's a recorded meeting.
Fantastic.
Well, there, there has been confusion as to what your ask was, and, and, you know, we hashed it out. And, and I think that's, that's what we always anticipated you asking for, and then you came back and asked for more. But that's...
Well, as we looked deeper into it and the questions started to arise, we, we had the very question that, you know, Mike was under the assumption that we could do that. We questioned whether we could do that, and we said, well, I, I mean, I had a conversation with Gail just about the tent, which I think normally could have been allowed without consent of counsel, but she thought that it was necessary for me to ask counsel.
Right.
So, while I'm here, I'm going to make sure that we address any other concerns, so we don't end up right back here.
That's fine. I mean, thank you. So, are we clear on what you can and can't do at this point? Do you want to have it in writing?
Yep.
Okay, let's get together, let's have a meeting, and we'll get together and, and we'll get it dialed down in writing as to what...
Very good.
You agree to, and we...
I look forward to it.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Gail, can you set that up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the support out there. Appreciate it.
Okay. Five point three. Consider and take all appropr, all possible action on the request for explanation in protocols in an emergency operations center under declared disaster per the Seabrook Emergency Management Plan and associated annexes on non-essential construction contracts. Jackie?
I just brought this up to the Hurricane Barrel. I just want to make sure that that situation, or try to prevent that from happening again, any sort of non-essential construction just be paused until the city gets, you know, back together, has power and everything. And it doesn't seem like that was...
I think it was a one-time deal, and, you know, it, it's something that happened. It was an accident. I think, I think we're all aware of that. And, uh, and again, you know, it's, it's, uh...
It would be easily resolved if you just add the language into the contract, is that...
That's a good idea.
...you must get approval from whatever.
Under declaration.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
That's a good idea.
In this case, that wouldn't have made any difference. There would have been no reason to not commence work on the third day after the hurricane. Every other city around I drove through that day was working that day. So, even if we said seventy-two hours after the hurricane, they would have been at work, and there would have been an accident, which by definition is an accident, and they hit a gas line. Nobody's more upset about that than the workers. So, how long after a hurricane and how big a hurricane? I'm not comfortable with putting that language in a contract.
What about saying until you get approval from the city? When it's declar, you know?
I'll just say.
Yeah, I mean, just saying you...
I miss service to you.
Okay.
Any other, any other, uh, issues? Five point four. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval amendment number three to the relocation of remaining funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, fund and amendment of fiscal year 2024 and fiscal year 2025 proposed CIP program to reflect the projects. Gail?
All right, Mayor and Council, on your attached...
Well, this is why we came to you at the beginning of July, wanting to reallocate the remaining ARPA funds.
And, uh, the pedestrian bridge that we originally had put in the proposal is going to take some time to get permits and design, and we are up against a timeline before the end of the year to get a, a contract fully executed. So, uh, staff has gone and looked at some additional options for your consideration to reallocate again the remaining ARPA funds. So, um, in this exhibit, you'll see that we've marked out the pedestrian bridge and has, and have added the recent, um, park lighting at Metter, uh, which was a CIP that the Open Space and Trails had brought forth and you approved for going on the capital improvement program. So, we could easily put that in. We did not have funding identified previously, and that would fit into this. In addition, uh, the Brummerhoff Park on Repstorf, uh, if you are familiar with that park, that's our well-utilized splash pad. There's a single-seat restroom, um, for the original restroom that faces Repstorf. And with the utilization between the birthday parties and the splash pad, uh, staff has gotten a cost on a two-stall restroom, uh, that could replace that one. And these two projects, five and six, are what are before you tonight. Now, in our next few items, we've gone ahead and taken the liberty of putting proposals that we have available for your consideration. But this, um, if approved, would be your new modified allocation for the ARPA funds.
Do I hear a motion?
Can, wait, um, I'm sorry. What's the hundred and sixty-nine thousand to the pickleball? Why is that so much?
So, you have a designer that has to design a concrete pad, uh, the installation of rebar concrete. Uh, it'll have concrete in between the pickleball courts, um, shade covering, aluminum seating, nets.
Where is this going to be at?
Behind Monroe Splash Pad on Repstorf.
Oh, that's right. Okay, I'm on the wrong page. Um, is there any, just to save a little money and use it for something else, is there any chance we could do this at, um, Meter Park, where there's the basketball courts already with the cover on it, the shade? There's already parking there?
For pickleball?
Yes, because it's just on a concrete, and you bring it...
Yeah, I, I think, um, the basketball court's pretty well-utilized as well. So, I think you'd be taking away from the basketball.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, the basketball court there is used quite a bit.
Okay, just a thought. Thank you.
Do we hear a motion?
Move to approve five point three.
Sorry, we had a motion.
Nope.
No, we didn't. No, we need a motion. Any, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five point five. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of a buy board proposal with fund abounds in the amount of ninety-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars for playground shade structures at Metter, Pine Gully, and Baybrook Parks. As part of the American Rescue Act, the ARPA funds allocations and approve and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents and amend the fiscal year 2024 CIP to reflect this project.
Move to approve five point five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Five point six. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of a cooperative proposal to design and construct pickleball courts with fencing, seating, and shade structures behind the Monroe Field Splash Pad with ProTech, with ProTech Track and Tennis Surfaces, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars as part of the American Rescue Act plan, uh, funds allocations and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents with, and amend the fiscal year 2024 CIP to reflect this project. Ryan, what's the number?
So, yeah, this would be another ARPA fund. Six pickleball courts. It's going to be two.
Two courts.
Two pickleballs. Two pickleball courts.
Okay.
We're going to use the existing parking at the splash pad.
So, where these red lines are?
That's not going to be...
That's an old, an old picture.
Okay, good. Because it could actually be closer to the splash pad then, correct?
Yes, that's, that is the end goal. We're going to, the parking is going to go away, and we're going to move it closer to the splash pad.
Perfect. I like that. Because in the future, people have been talked, talking about a dog park even behind the pickleball court. Because then you could do that, because you don't, there's already two fences exist. You'd only have to put two fences up, and then you could have pickleball courts and a dog park.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Second.
I didn't make a motion.
Oh, you didn't?
You can't second a motion until a motion is made.
I'm ahead of myself. I get extra pay?
Yeah. Making a motion to approve five point six, is that...
Okay.
That's okay. All in favor? Thank you. Five point seven. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of a buy board proposal with CXT Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars for upgrade the Brummerhoff Park restroom as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA funds allocations and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents and amend the fiscal year 2024 CIP to reflect this project. Do I hear a motion?
Approve five point seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five point eight. Consider and take all appropriate action on the amount, uh, on the approval of a buy board proposal with ProTrak and Tennis in the amount of forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars for resurfacing of the basketball court at, at Baybrook Park as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA funds allocations and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents and amend the fiscal year 2024 CIP to reflect this project.
Move to approve five point eight.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five point nine. Consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of a buy board proposal with spark lighting in the amount of sixty-one thousand dollars for solar trail lighting in Metter Park as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA fund allocations and authorize the city manager to execute all associated documents and amend the twenty, fiscal year 2024 CIP to reflect this project.
Move to approve five point nine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point, five point ten. Consider and approve upon the first reading of ordinance 2024-16, budget amendment number five for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024, in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars for the general enterprise, public safety vehicle and equipment and general enterprise vehicle equipment funds. An ordinance amending the amount of appropriations for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023 and ending September 30th, 2024, by authorizing certain additions in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars for general enterprise, public safety vehicle and equipment and general and enterprise vehicle and equipment funds, authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to facilitate the changes identified and finding available unencumbered funds for the supplemental appropriation and/or reserve reduction.
Move to approve five point ten.
Second.
Any questions?
Any discussion? Questions? Nobody? Mike? Any explanations?
Only if you want to.
I read mine.
The majority of these are just reallocating, um, um, funds from one, one department to another. Um, the fleet fund, we are asking for an amendment, because we would like to order vehicles now, even though we likely won't get them for eighteen months. But in order to have funds available for those, those funds...
Okay, I understand. This is an ongoing, our vehicle depletion fund keeps on going year after year.
I'm sorry?
Our vehicle replacement fund keeps on going year after year, actually.
That is correct. Um, I mean, next year, I think we only have like one vehicle from, uh, the, uh, public, um, public works department that's going to be replaced. But yes, essentially, um, we are expensing funds into those fleet replacements every, every year, so that at the time we need to replace them, we can do so.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor? Thank you. Five point eleven. Consider and take all appropriate action on the purchase of a new artificial twenty-foot LED Christmas tree, outdoor ornaments, and bows from Main Street in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and ten cents, and adding this as an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 CIP. This is an unbudgeted item and require a budget amendment.
What happened to our last one? Just curious.
So, in an effort not to become the Grinch, we wanted to make sure that the Parks Department, with some recent requests to upgrade that tree, was carried through. So, it is, if you've noticed during the tree lighting, the city event, um, it's getting quite dated. Um, the green has, uh, well faded. The Home Depot ornaments have well faded. And so, we had budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars for Christmas, um, decorations, and those decorations are on order now. So, we will be doing a refresh of everything around the community house. However, those funds would not allow us to, to carry forward with the artificial tree. So, um, that's why this is before you, uh, to take, this would be coming out of reserves. It's unbudgeted. We'd come back with a budget amendment, uh, to allow us to do that. But it is, it's very dated. Uh, the Parks Crew's taken excellent care of it, but it's literally falling apart. In addition, the bows, as everybody knows, on Main Street, the wreaths go up on the poles. Um, if you've looked at those last December, they're pretty faded, and they don't look good either. So, um, we were hoping to be able to squeeze everything in the twenty-five thousand dollars, but as you can see, each piece that we are uncovering with Christmas decorations are quite costly.
Okay, yeah, I get it. I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Move to approve five point eleven.
All in favor? Passed unanimously. Eight point O, discussion. Eight point one. Discussion of the tree and live wires over East Meyer for future disaster planning. Joe?
Okay, so, we talked about this before, and my position was we shouldn't have driven underneath it. And I know we put a, a barricade up. But again, I talked to a bunch of people about this, and guy is a NASA engineer, and he goes, he dates a lady that lives in, um, where the List Mansion used to be. What's that little neighborhood that's gated right there with a waterfall in front of it? Um, he dates a lady that's in there, and so he came back and forth from Clear Lake. He said he must have driven underneath that thing twenty-five times. He said he didn't know. He thought he was allowed to drive on that one lane. So, all I'm saying is that if that ever happens again, because that's su, that's dangerous. We, everybody knows a huge, heavy tree over live power lines, even though I know there wasn't any power. But if there ever was power in it, you'd be electrocuted. It's a, just a dangerous situation. So, I'm saying we have police, we have fire, or we have city workers. Someone, I think, should have been there all times to not let anybody drive by there. And yes, I know there are some homes there, but you either allow, you just park it where no one can go by there, and you say, hey, dangerous situation. And, but if you live there and you don't have to go around it, or you come from one way or the other, just so you can go to your home. Now, I talked to the attorney, not you, but the other guy, and he said, well, if we put the barricade there, our obligation was done, you know, the city wouldn't get sued. And I go, I'll take you on in court, and I'd win. I'd beat you. And then he kind of rethought for a second, and he goes, well, we could have put something up there that said like dangerous, you know, power lines or, you know, whatever. And I go, okay, see, now there's a little bit more. All I'm saying is I think we needed something. So, I've given you my opinion, but I'd like to hear from everybody else, because I don't think anybody should have driven underneath that tree ever. That's my opinion.
Couple points.
Go ahead.
So, I live nearby, and I drove down there, and a man came out of his house, and he helped me turn around. And he was, that's what Seabrook citizens do for each other. Should that, should the blockade gone up earlier? Possibly. But chief, did we have, you can come up here if you'd like, did we have an officer in a car to man that?
Councilman, we could have put a vehicle out there with a policeman in it, but that would mean that a policeman would not be able to...
would mean that a policeman would not be available to do other police work.
And at the time, were we pretty stretched?
Yes, sir, we were. But because of the circumstances, the entire community was facing.
If someone, if we put a blockade, isn't that police property? Whereas if somebody moves it, that's against the law, isn't it?
It is.
So that's kind of what happened at the end of Toddville. I mean, we really did, did we have any issues there? Because I know that was a blocked area as well.
For them to be, now, we can write a citation if they move a barricade, but if it's a police barricade, then that's another issue, but they're both citable offenses.
The only suggestion I would have is that, yes, we could have moved maybe a little bit quicker. But thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Chief, but what if we could use a empty for future, a fire truck or an empty police car and not man it, just have it there with lights on, saying, you know, this is obviously, you cannot pass down here? Is that something that would be option?
We could certainly do that, but then there are issues of vandalism and damage to that vehicle. And then if, if we have too many vehicles damaged, then we're basically mission failure, because we can't do our job.
Right.
But I think our disappointment is in the wrong direction. I think, I think the issue was the people that were moving the barricade were putting other people in danger. They put their own residents and neighbors in danger by moving that barricade. I moved that barricade back three or four times during the hurricane, and it was out there early. But I think we're misdirecting our irritation to the city when it wasn't the city, it was people, because they kept moving the barricade. And, and I think that, you know, we're showing disdain for the city and what we did and what we didn't do, when I know we weren't the ones moving the barricade. And, and so, that's just my opinion. I, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I've been hammered on the internet for things I said, but, but again, it wasn't directed at an individual with what I said. I said what I meant, but it was, it was not very smart to move those barricades, or to drive under that tree. And I don't think anybody would disagree with, with that.
Right. I agree, but that's why people do move barricades all the time. And once it got moved, so here's, here's the point that becomes dangerous. John Doe comes and moves the barricade, not city, not the police, not anybody like that. No one in authority moves it. John Doe moves it. 30 minutes later, you drive down, and it's over in the one lane. You think, you, you don't know, you think maybe someone from the city moved it, and then you drive in that other lane. And that's what a lot of people did. So no one's saying that the, you know, the, we know that individuals moved it. My point is, to keep that from happening, because what, okay, so just think about this. Put this scenario in. Tree falls, smashed on car, killed mother and three kids. Now, what do you do? God, we wish we had a policeman there. Man, you know, we got this big lawsuit, because that's exactly what would have happened. So I'm glad it didn't happen. I'm just saying for in the future, and yes, Chief, I agree with you, it probably puts us at issue with, you know, stretching people thin, but there's guys that could work overtime. I even think you could put a city worker with the yellow lights in a truck, pay him overtime, and I'm just saying, there's no way we should allow anybody to ever drive underneath that. And if it needs bigger barricades or whatever, and kind of anchor them down or some, something like that, maybe that's what we have to do. But no one should have ever driven underneath it. That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, and just, just to add, when this started getting so much publicity, we did, our emergency management coordinator had signs printed, because we were noticing in other communities that the logo of the police being on the barricade was important for people to realize that the city put that there. So those were printed, actually, at the end of the EOC activation, and we have those ready for the next event. So we've done some corrective action on that as well.
That's, that's all I'm looking at. This is not to try to hang anybody. This is just to have a discussion and try to solve it, because I've always heard all this about safety, 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 which, of course, you need to. But driving underneath a live wire and a big, heavy tree, I just thought was wrong. And for a while, I just kept hearing, well, there was a barricade. Well, that just wasn't enough, in my opinion, so.
Okay. 8.2, discussion of the FEMA requirements for restroom facilities within certain flood zones to a height of 18 feet, and a FEMA response request sent by the city.
Okay, so another one is, when Jeff Larson was on council, this came up, because we were talking about building a restroom on Main Street, and then we were told it'd have to be 18 feet above sea level. And then to make it ADA compliant, you'd have to have this huge ramp to get to it, and the thing would look terrible. And it was going to be like $60,000, $80,000. So I guess with all the stuff with the barge or yard or whatever, and I guess Jackie, too, finally, we wrote FEMA, and this is the way I'm understanding it, we wrote FEMA and said, you know, the city wrote FEMA and said, what's the deal with these bathrooms having to be above floodplain elevation? And the way I understand it is FEMA came back and said, no, because I've seen the letter, you don't have to, there's, they have no regulation that the bathroom itself has to be that high. But the way I understand it is, you have to have some type of regulation or regulator to not allow seawater to back up, to get into your sewer system, which then, if the seawater gets in there, that ruins the, all your pumps and all your stuff at your wastewater treatment plant. So am I misunderstanding that, or what? But I've been in many meetings where that came up. Well, they have to be elevated. Now I'm hearing they don't. So I'd like clarification.
Okay. I can clarify that. So I did attach, once we put this on the agenda, I attached two sections of the ordinance, the AE zone regulations and the VE zone regulations. The area that you're talking about down on Main Street, just east of Merlion, we, there's correspondence from FEMA, from Brian Bartley, from FEMA. We asked that specific question. Can we put a city facility down on Main Street below base flood? His answer to the question is no, that we cannot. And it's in that same correspondence thread that was attached that was sent. The additional item, Jackie did ask that we submit something about using temporary restrooms at the barge. And so there's multiple questions that were answered through this thread, because they're just a continuation of different questions we have asked over the years. And they did respond that you could have a temporary restroom below base flood, as long as it was never considered a permanent facility where you connected it to permanent utility facilities like sewer and stuff. It had to be road-ready, and it had to have current tags and registration. So in the event of a storm, it could be moved. So at one point in time, we went through the whole exercise, because we wanted to provide restroom facilities for the fishermen along Main Street. And we went through the process because we were trying to figure out a way to do it, to the extent that we were even going to put something below base flood in a V-zone on Main Street that was actually not going to be connected to any utilities and stuff. It was going to be some sort of incinerator-type utility where the toilet would incinerate and stuff. And they still told us that you could not put that below base flood, because I want to emphasize to everybody, and it's in the two sections of the code that I have attached. It says, the only thing that can go below base flood, the only use, storage, access to the building, and the garage. That is the only thing. And it specifically says that you can't inhabit that area. It can't be used for human habitation, which a restroom is habitation. And so, again, we're limited. And we've asked, through the years, we've asked specific questions. And if you read through that thread, it kind of follows through that. So, again, you can make the insinuation without us asking another direct question to FEMA, that if they won't let us put a restroom below base flood, we can't allow anybody to put a restroom below base flood.
Then, so then, my next question is, how does like Pier 6 and places down in Galveston or even Marais do this?
And I don't have answers to those questions. Other jurisdictions do things, and it doesn't mean that it's appropriate or it's allowed. And at some point in time, somebody will be dealing with that. And how I always want to put, we are audited, so as a community. Every five years, FEMA comes in and audits our city. It's called a CAF. They call it a community assistant visit. They're not here to assist us. They're here to find out what we're doing wrong. And literally, they'll drive through our community, and they'll question everything that we've done. And it doesn't matter if we did it in the first year of the five-year cycle or the fifth year. If they find something wrong that we did, they will make the city go back and make those people fix those things. So the last thing you ever want us to do is make a mistake in that, because you can't imagine the political problems that you guys would have if after five years of somebody using something, and we come back and tell them we made a mistake and we allowed it, and we make them tear that all back out and put it back how it should have been. So, I mean, this is something that we want people to develop in our community. We want them to do it appropriately, but we, out of all the ordinances that you guys can really grant a lot of variances to, this isn't one of them. 44 CFR, 60.3 of the federal code registry, establishes our floodplain requirements, and they have a model ordinance that we have to adopt, and we have to regulate. Now, we can add additional standards. So you can see, when we adopt those codes, we have an 18-inch freeboard, which means people got to build 18 inches above. We can add additional regulations to that that increase the requirement, but we cannot reduce that model ordinance in any way. FEMA will come in, and we'll be in a lot of trouble if we tried to do that. And when you read through the ordinance, I'm not going to tell you that there's not a variance allowance for you guys throughout that ordinance, but after doing this for as long as I've done, and I promise you, if you grant a variance, you better be able to justify it full-heartedly. It's not going to be because that you feel that it's okay for this specific location. They're very strict on how you grant variances and what those things are for.
Sean, I just want to clarify something here. Habitable space, is it, you said a bathroom was?
Huh?
Did you say that the bathroom was a habitable? I can't even say the word.
Yeah, human habitable space.
Okay, from the energy code, right here, it says that, that would only be for building, and a space in a building for a living, eating, or sleeping, or cooking. Bathrooms, toilets, hallways, storage areas, closets, or utility rooms are not considered habitable spaces.
Well, you're quoting a wrong code. You're quoting a whole different code section.
Okay.
So this is the floodplain ordinance, and it doesn't have anything to do with that code.
It just, that sounds weird to me. And then also...
But again, relate back to what I said before. When you read those sections, it says the only use is below base flood. Storage, bathroom's not storage. Access to the building, it's not access to the building, and it's definitely not a garage. Those are the only specific, it says, usable solely for parking of vehicles, building access, or storage.
Okay, what about, just since we're talking about this and publicly, what about the backflow valve, for lack of a better word? I don't know what it's called, but it's like some sort of valve that especially prevents the sewer water, or the whatever, from back flowing into?
Yeah. So those allowances don't provide exceptions to that section of the code.
You still can't use that?
There's nothing that says that if you do, if you put in a backwater valve, that you can now have those specific uses below base flood. Because the issue is always going to be, anything below base flood in a hurricane event is going to go underwater and cause damage. And so, again, they're limiting those type of uses below base flood, because, again, they, at some point in time, they don't want those damages to occur.
Okay.
So restroom facilities are not allowed below base flood, y'all.
Even if the piping went up?
Huh?
Even if the piping went up?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Bathroom use is not allowed below base flood.
Okay, thank you.
And you guys, and, and again, I'm going to fall back to, we already got an interpretation from FEMA. Again, if you scroll all the way down on the email thread that I sent you guys, where it addresses the barges restroom temporary use, if you go all the way down, Nick sent them a picture of a map that shows us putting a restroom below base flood on Main Street, and it's right there. And the interpretation of, this is what we want to do, we won't even want to put a bathroom that's not even going to be connected to sewer and water. The interpretation back from FEMA was, you can't do that, because it's not storage, access to the building, or garage.
But the barge could put one on the water, just like everybody, every marine in the area is done.
Well, I think that's how it, on the barge itself was like that.
Yes, but I'm saying for the yard. If they wanted to put one out on the, in the water, they could. It's Coast Guard regulated.
Gotcha.
Has nothing to do with city.
Yeah.
After pumping in.
Yeah. And within that thread, again, we asked that question at one point in time.
I have no clue.
So we want a clarification from FEMA on the use of a barge as a restroom facility, because we had approved it in the past, Lakewood Yacht Club has one over in that facility. But we wanted to clarify, because laws have changed, codes have changed. And again, if you look through that thread, it addresses, Nick asked that question of Mr. Bartley from FEMA, Region 6, and he answered the question that there are no FEMA regulations when it relates to something that's floating or on water.
Right. And I think that they didn't understand, that was where the, I think Joe was trying to go, that was, the only option was the 18 feet up. They didn't understand that they could use a portable restroom, because we were told by, that wasn't allowed either.
Well, and we've had multiple conversations with them about using a floating facility, because we gave them that option at one point in time. But again, the cost of that's pretty expensive, because you got to go get a barge, and by the time you plummet and do all those things, I don't know what Lakewood ended up spending.
For sure.
Quite a bit. And so, again, they elected that they didn't want to do that at the time. But I promise you, we've had multiple conversations with the barge ownership on using a floating facility.
Yes.
At one point in time, they were going to put it in the channel, and we wanted to make sure that it was within. So there's other elements to bathrooms, y'all. You got to have a bathroom within 500 feet of the facility. So we went through the point of figuring out the distances and how that would work, where they, so we've had those conversations with them.
Right. Anyways, okay, that's all my due sense.
Anything else? Okay. 8.3.
Thank you.
Discussion of a policy requiring interviews of three candidates by city council for the selection of a city attorney. Joe?
So, I was under the understanding that we, we were supposed to do that, but then Rachel said, no, it's not in the charter. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, why did I hear that at one of our meetings? I was told.
I went back and listened to the recording of July 18, 2023, in which the council, because as you know, in the charter, the city attorney is, is your appointment. So I went back and listened to it. What had happened was, I had came back to council and told them that with the Texas Local Government Code, that city attorneys are exempt from having to go out for what we say is RFQ or Request for Qualifications. And I made the recommendation, the item was listed as recommendation from the city manager. So, listening to the tape, I expressed to council that after legal review and conversing with our finance department, that it was my understanding that there, we didn't have to go out for bid, typically like our bids or RFQs. I prefaced the conversation with that. There was no comments from council, and I proposed Olson and Olson, which was currently our interim, our interim counsel at the time. And the item by the tape was approved with no comment. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but I think I was trying to clarify at that time when I brought it back to council for decision, what, why we didn't go out for bid, because it was exempt from Texas Local Government Code for doing that.
But Gail, did you, you did interview other firms?
When we were initially going after the interim firm, we had contacted a few firms via email, and then landed on Olson. So the second process, when we got the permanent contract, there is not three bids.
But the first time, we did?
By email only, right. By email only. So council, I think, did not elect to do any of the interviews, and that was probably where the recommendation of me coming back to you. But there wasn't anything I could find on the tape as far as council directing me to set up those interviews.
I, I think I remember now, once you said that about, we were in executive session, when we walked out, someone mentioned, and I think I was talking to you, and it was, it was something about something like that. And so I guess that got misconstrued into thinking that, because I think someone asked, I thought we had to interview three, and they go, yeah or no, and then went on, and then I'm just remembering, oh, you interviewed three, we didn't do that. So I'm thinking that we did it wrong. But now you're clarifying it. So that's, this is good. This is why we discuss it. And Mr. Attorney, you get to stick around, all right?
Okay. Are we done with that one? 8.4, discussion of a monthly financial report to be presented to city council. 8.4, discussion of a monthly financial report to be presented to city council meetings to occur at the first regular city council meeting of each month.
Okay, so I've had a few citizens ask, you know, do we do a financial thing? And Mike, you do a good job. This is not a negative, this is actually a positive. So I was actually, when I thought about this, I was going, you know, the last time I was at the H-CMA meeting, the Harris County Mayors and Council, at the end of the meeting, they always do this, hey, we got to do with the budget, you know, we're, everybody's wanting to, they finished eating, and everybody's wanting to kind of get out of there. The speaker's already spoken. They go, we got to do a little bit of business, and they say, hey, you know, we have 34,752 dollars, make a motion to approve the budget, and, you know, we all say yay or nay, and then it's done. Well, all I'm trying to get is, maybe not that simple, but anything major, you know, like, you know, hey, we, and it's only like at the first, you know, only once a month, we don't need to do it twice. And I would say the first of the month because you're really going to go over the last month, and just a basic budget thing where then it's on record too. Like people know, like, hey, the city has, you know, $3 million or whatever it has, you know, and they kind of know, and they just have a, just in general, budget. And that's all I'm trying, that's all I was, and it's appeasing people who have asked.
If I, if I could, so we used to, now that I have the mic. No, in all seriousness, we used to present, I'd come up and present the monthly report. Council recommended that it go to consent, and then it went to, can you just email it to me? And we posted on the website. Gail's pulling up, it's all on our website. I certainly don't have a, a problem going over financials. I love to hear myself talk, so I'll let y'all hear this.
Unlike most of us.
I will request one small thing. So like, if, if we have it on the first council meeting of the month, it's really going to be dated information. So for example, tonight, we're closing out July. I couldn't have had July. We're still posting entries, so if we could make that, make a recommendation to make it the prior month in the next month.
Yeah, let, let's do it on the second time of the, that's, see, that's even, I'm glad we talked, so. And, and it's like, you already have the information, this is, you know, and like you say, it's for the website, but it's, it can be verbally talked about really quick. And I'm talking about a short, sweet little thing, and there we go.
No, no.
Gail, can you add that to routine business?
Yes, we can.
Speaking of which, routine business. 9.1, city manager update and report to city council on various items that require no action, including post-hurricane barrel recovery efforts, Seabrook Boards and Commissions, transportation projects, Board of Houston Real Spur, City of Seabrook CIP projects, economic development updates, and the City of Seabrook grant administration.
All right, Mayor and Council, given that it's the late hour, I'll go through this very quickly. Main emphasis on this is I did want to report where we're at post-hurricane barrel. On city efforts, as you can see, we are permitting, are waiving the permits on the building side as we went through the emergency meeting and protocol with council. We're up to about $3,100, $278,000 in value. There are still several roof repairs coming in as reported by community development, so this number will only grow, and that was in four 60 days, I believe. City facilities and equipment damages, we had several, 13 assets were impacted, little over $100,000 right now in insurance claims. We have fuel costs over $6,000, and we have an estimated overtime on personnel of around $15,000. We did activate our debris removal contract on our monitor and our hauling. These are pre-positioned contracts that council approves way back before the storm comes through. They are not cheap, however, this does go when FEMA does declare disaster that these come in handy. They do all of the necessary documentation so that we can get that 75% reimbursed. The 25% is on the city. We have imposed the monitor contract of not to exceed 100,000, on the hauling and disposal not to exceed 300,000. We are getting very close to that number, so most likely we'll be coming back to council just to inform them that we're going over that amount. So $400,000 in debris alone. We've got over 16,000 cubic yards in vegetative, and that's reaching about all of the city now. I know that we've got some people that got their stuff out late. The next phase is CND or the construction and demolition, they'll be making those passes. We'll make a final pass, but we are getting to the last part of the debris pickup. Disaster recovery centers, I'm going to run quickly through this because this is all on social media, but those have been set up for people who need to file claims. And Amanda's done a great job of summarizing, and I'll go quickly through these, but they've been extremely busy in public affairs, putting out updates, and these numbers only indicate since we finished the storm of keeping, you know, when the centers opened up, FEMA relief, all of those things. So extremely busy, the after-the-storm page on the website is up. We've gotten quite a bit of new users on the website. We've got over 14,000 new ones, 42,000 in page views. The city website had a tick up, obviously, during that time, and she's got close metrics on the specific links within those pages on the store. So we've got specific data, and I'll send all this out to you as well. Facebook, again, 48 separate posts, impressions of over 187,000, so we had a lot of eyes on those, as well as Nextdoor with about 27,000 impressions. Our boards and commissions, it's been kind of light since your last meeting. We are continuing the Charter Review Commission. It'll start back up in a couple of weeks for their next meeting. They finished going through all the articles of your charter, and they'll now begin composing proposed amendments, and they'll finalize a report that'll come back to council. Your Open Space and Trails Committee met, got general updates, and they'll be passing along some recommendations, your next agenda for bat boxes and tree planting. P&amp;Z did not meet. And some of these are not updated, but on your 146 projects, the two that we've been talking about, your 146 landscaping, I know I've gotten a couple of questions in-house on that. The contractor or the supervisor at TechStots let me know that the landscaping crew that was supposed to be here on August 1st is over in Kima doing some work. Weber is not quite done, so those lane closures we're seeing, they're scraping up trash, debris, rocks and such, getting ready for the landscape crew. So we've got probably at least a month, I'm going to say they're, they're behind before the landscaping crew can walk in. 146 at Red Bluff, we've talked extensively tonight about this, but they did turn out a email to us, so there'll be some lane closures in relation to this project at the, on August 7th, 146 southbound, where they're going to have main lanes closed between Port and Red Bluff, so a little bit of impact on that property. Pinegully Waste Water Plant, if you're on Toddville, you'll notice at Robinson Park, we've got a aquatic construction crew there, and that is the last tie-in for the lift station. So we are getting very, very close to reaching 100%. Once that last tie-in is there, 100% of those flows will be diverted to the new plant, and we will be in officially closeout. Any questions?
Anybody? Do I hear a motion?
Well, I have to go back.
Oh, I'm sorry, future meetings. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, your next meeting is a workshop, a budget workshop at 5:00 PM on August 20th, followed by your regular meeting at 6:00 PM the same day.
Thank you. All in favor? 946.